And zoning board meeting. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Present.
Mr. Cohen.
Present.
Ms. Furtig.
Mr. Gannon.
Here.
Ms. McCartney.
Here.
Mr. Rotella.
Here.
Mr. Scheckman.
Here.
Mr. Waymoth.
Here.
Chair Scott.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please, everyone stand. I'd like to introduce the board members that are here with us this evening. Virtually, we have Brad Cohen. We also have Sheri McCartney. And we also have Mr. Jay Scheckman. To my far left is Mr. Michael Waymoth. Next to him is William Rotella. To my right is John Bronco. And to his right is Mary Furtig. And I'm the Chair, Jacqueline Scott. Ella, can you please introduce the city staff?
And Steve Gannon is here, too.
I'm sorry. Jeez. How many times am I going to do that? You know what it is, Steve? This bar right here. Sorry, buddy.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the Board, Ella Parker, Urban Design and Planning Manager. With us from staff tonight, we have Assistant City Attorney Dwayne Spence, Assistant City Attorney Sharie Wallin, Carlan Grant, Nick Calarderos, Yvonne Redding, Jim Hetzel at the other side of the room there. And then online with us, we have Igor Vasilia from our Public Works Department, and Tricia Logan, who's going to be announcing the speakers today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have all board members had an opportunity to review the minutes of our previous meeting? Is there any additions, corrections, or obtain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, seconded.
Okay. It's been motion approved and seconded. Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Passes. Anyone here this evening that wishes to speak on any of the agenda items, what I'd like to do is get you sworn in. So if you will stand, the city attorney will swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
So, anyone that is going to be speaking tonight will have three minutes to speak. There are a lot of people here tonight. We want to make sure that everybody does get the opportunity to speak. If you find yourself signed up to speak and the point's already been made, but you just want to stand up and say you oppose, you're in favor, we would appreciate it so we don't have that redundancy of the same issues back and forth. So let me, if there's anybody here that represents the association, they will have five minutes. Otherwise, speakers will have three. Okay, let's begin with case number. PLR 19052. Multifamily residential units on the New River in the downtown. The board, I'd like to hear from the board, is there any site visits or any communications to disclose?
I did a site visit, spoke with the applicant's attorney, and spoke with the developer.
Site visit? Oh, I'm sorry. Are we going in order, or you want me to just?
I mean, virtual in when we're done up here, if that's okay, Brad.
Oh, you got it. Thanks.
Madam Chair, Mike Waymoth. I received numerous emails from neighbors, and I attended a Zoom presentation, had a conversation with Ellen Bogdanoff that represents some of the owners in an adjacent building, spoke to applicant's counsel, did a site visit, and I think that's it.
Okay, Mary?
Yes, I received nearly 200 letters and emails, which I'm prepared to read the names into the record if that's what the city attorney wants.
200 names in the record?
I don't have to do that.
Just complying with the requirement to specify who we.
Whatever the city attorney wants you to do.
You don't have to read the names into the record, no.
I do not?
No.
Okay, thank you. And I had conversations with Ms. Toothacre and Ms. Bogdanoff. I spoke with Midge Clark. I have had personally, I've had emails from, well, those are all in this packet here. So I did visit the site. And if I think of somebody else, I will. Thank you.
John Bronco?
Yes, I met with the developer, the developer's counsel. I spoke to Ms. Bogdanoff. I also received multiple emails regarding the project.
Thank you. Mr. Gannon?
Yes, applicant's counsel, site visit, Ellen Bogdanoff, and emails for various emails and letter.
Thank you. Where's Mike? Oh. Okay. Let's see. Sheri McCartney?
Good evening. I, too, have spoken with counsel for the applicant and Ms. Bogdanoff. And I have received numerous emails as well.
Okay, Brad?
I've spoken with applicant's counsel, did a site visit, received numerous emails on the projects.
Mr. Scheckman?
I spoke with applicant's counsel, site visit, received all the numerous emails.
And I spoke to applicant's counsel. I spoke to Ellen Bogdanoff. I spoke to the owner. I spoke to numerous citizens that called me. I apologize, I didn't write all your names down. And I received multiple emails. So is the.
Can I just add to make sure that the record is correct, that I as well spoke to Ellen. I also received all the same emails that everybody else did, and I spoke to some of the residents next door.
Great. Anybody else want to add anything? John?
I did receive a phone call from one of the adjacent unit owners. I think her name was Midge.
Yeah, I did, too. And others. Okay. Very good. Is the applicant's attorney? Okay, great. We'll give you 15 minutes.
Thank you.
You want to end early to come back for rebuttal later, you're welcome to.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair. Members of the Planning and Zoning Board, Stephanie Toothacre and my co-counsel Ken Kichel, on behalf of the applicant, Roberts Equities. We are here to discuss 808 Southeast Fourth Street, which is, as you know, a site plan level three, and we thank you for the opportunity to present this project to you this evening. The project, of course, is at 808 Southeast, Southeast Fourth, roughly behind the Riverside Hotel, just off of Las Olas. And I know you're all very familiar with it. You all did a site visit. It is in the downtown rack. It is designated downtown rack. The property has the underlying land use of downtown rack, which is intended to encourage development or redevelopment of areas that have regional significance and facilitate a mix of uses with residential, obviously, being one of those uses. Strong definition of urban form and promoting live, work, play environment. The property is also zoned, Regional Activity Center, East Mixed Use, which is located east of the Rack CC and includes residential areas on either side of Las Olas Boulevard and commercial business uses along Federal Highway in Las Olas. Regulations within the EMU are designated to provide for a transition from intense uses permitted in the Rack to those established in the east of the EMU. The property has an underlying downtown character area of near downtown, which is made up of a variety of institutional retail and office uses and offers a variety of housing options. It's characterized by intermediate scale. I'm sorry, I got to move. My presentation is being blocked by the box here. So give me a second. Whoops. I can't read my. Let me close that. There we go. Sorry about that. The people on the screen were blocking my presentation. In any event, the project is located in a residential transition zone with a transition distance of 200 feet from the eastern property inward, which includes the entire width of the property. The transition recommended is a maximum height of two and a half times the maximum height of the adjacent zoning district. We meet that. The adjacent zoning district is residential, multifamily, mid-rise, medium-density RMM 25, and has a maximum height of 55 feet. This results in a height of 137 feet six inches for the project, and that's what this project complies with. The property is also located within the NRMP's Area 5 Las Olas Gateway, and that is not codified and remains an intent-driven document, which is not meant to be prescriptive. So here's the property. I think when you look at the overall aerial view of the property and you talk about compatibility, you can see that we are, in fact, compatible with everything that's around us when you look towards the Rack, which this property is obviously designated. I think you can also look at this property and look at the age of that building, and you could presume that that is going to be redeveloped at some point in time. It's obviously not, it's antiquated, it's old, it's in very poor shape, and it's certainly not meant to stay in the long term. Again, just some views of aerials that look to the west and explain, you know, when the city decided to draw the Rack line, they included this property for a reason. It's meant to be included in the overall character of the area, including the buildings around us. So it was built in 1957. Its 40-year was completed in 2009. And you can see from the street, it's just beyond, you know, its useful life, clearly. The buildings next to us also are frankly not in violation with their 10-year or 50-year compliance standards. All these buildings are starting to get a little old, and so it's, you know, it's time to look towards redevelopment, which is the intent behind the Rack. Rivercrest was built in '63, and they actually completed their 10-year or 50-year in 2016. Our project contains 77 units. Five units are actually in the podium with 71 in the tower. The first floor is the lobby. Second floor is parking. Third floor is parking and residential. Fourth is parking and residential. Fifth is parking and residential. The 16th floor is residential, and that is the last habitable floor. What's above that is actually a roof deck with amenities. Our side backs, our step backs, we have 35 to the center line of the. Our side back, our step backs, we have 35 to the center line of the road at the front, zero on the side, zero, or, excuse me, five on the west, and 18 to the property line at the rear of the New River, which is in compliance with the master plan. At the front, the step back is 15 feet above five stories, east 15 feet, west 15 feet, and 30 feet above four stories at the New River. We have no parking reduction request. It is fully compliant with the parking requirements, and we also have bicycle parking. So here's just some images of the property, both during the day and at night, and from the water view, and it does have that beautiful waters edge pool that overlooks the New River. Just some images. So again, here is a comparison. This is one thing that I think that's really important. This property was submitted in 2019, prior to the adoption of the downtown master plan. The downtown master plan requires that you ask for variances of certain things. That does not apply here. This project was submitted well before the adoption of the master plan, so we don't have to ask for variances. At the time that the project was submitted, it complied with the spirit and intent of the plan that was a goals document and not a codified plan as it is today. If we were to submit today, we would have a different conversation, but it was submitted pursuant to the rules that were in place at the time. So the transition area dictates that you cannot exceed 137 feet 6 inches, and this project is compliant. The maximum street wall is 300 feet, we have 100. The maximum tower floor plate is 18,000 square feet for buildings lower than 15 floors, and we are compliant with that. The maximum podium height is seven floors, we're at five. The maximum building tower step, or, excuse me, minimum tower step back is 30 feet. It only goes down to 15 if your right-of-way is smaller than 60 feet, and in this case, it is slightly smaller than 60 feet. But again, importantly, this project was in compliant with the master plan in place at the time that it was submitted, and that applies also to the tower separation, which is the 15 feet on the east and the west, and the minimum residential unit size doesn't apply. So here we're showing you that we are compliant with the 13 stories or the 137 feet 6 inches, and what's above that is an amenity deck and just architectural elements that are, you know, blocking the air conditioning units and whatnot. Here's just a side view that shows you essentially the same thing, that it is compliant with that height limitation. And here, I think this is really important. The project still meets the intent of the downtown master plan by addressing building scale. It encourages a more human framing of the street and provides light and air at the pedestrian level through a combination of design strategies. For example, the podium is only four to five stories, where a maximum of seven stories is actually recommended, and the tower floor plate is only 12,120 square feet, where a maximum of 18,000 square feet is recommended. So it's still not as high as the downtown master plan lets you go. We're also showing you here on both this slide, we show you the 15 feet setback from Southeast Fourth Street, and we show you the setbacks to our neighbors, which are, I'm sorry, the distance between the building is 42 feet, and the step back is 15 feet. And on the other side, we're 23 feet from the adjacent building, which is Rivercrest, 30 feet in some places, and 15 feet step back from the podium. This meets compatibility from an infrastructure standpoint, as evidenced by this letter. As it relates to parking, the project does not actually result in enough trips to require a full parking study, so it's a very minimal impact. And these are our responses to some of the comments that we had heard from our neighbors. So the project conforms with the intent of the downtown master plan and the New River master plan, which inherently have neighborhood compatibility measures built into its guidelines that are to implement this project. As I said, the podium is only four stories, and we comply with public works and traffic. So this is, my client actually reached out. We spent a lot of time, we spent about two years reaching out to the neighborhoods, and we thought that, you know, that's a really important thing to do. We always want to be friends with our neighbors, and we always want to find a way to work together. This was presented to my client as an alternate to the site plan that was developed by ADACHI. This is, I think, what they had suggested we could build instead, and I wanted you to see it because after spending two years and, you know, close to $1 million on developing site plans, this was a very difficult thing for us to respond to. I would also note that they were suggesting that we build 28 units, when the project that sits there today has 33. So it would have been a reduction from what sits on the site today. So we made a lot of architectural changes through the process, and I wanted to just go through a few of them. We did, after our meeting with the neighbors, we did hear from them, and we tried to make as many changes as we possibly could. We eliminated the architectural roof element to comply with the maximum permitted height. Our balconies were reduced to a maximum of three feet into the step back. Only the street balconies were kept at five feet into the step back, but the balconies that are on the side were reduced. The roof mechanical farm louvers were changed to solid walls with horizontal banding. The VRS incorporated at-ground levels separated by vertical elements from the public right-of-way, and we added a Riverside green wall, which extended to cover the entire parking level. We also made some additional revisions based on community feedback. The east elevation here showing before, reviewed by staff and submitted to PZB, and after, we added the green wall. We also, this is a most recent comment, we had heard a couple of comments from our neighbors and also from some of you on the Planning and Zoning Board, that it was really that edge of the building that was the closest to the Rivercrest condominium, so we took a hard look at that and determined that this was something that we could address by shaving off a corner of the building that would improve the western-looking views from the Rivercrest building, which seemed to be the biggest issue that we were dealing with. So we reduced the southeast corner by removing a five-by-six corner on levels two, three, four, and five, which dramatically increases the view, the westward-looking view, which I believe is the, I could be wrong, but I believe is the kitchen window view from Rivercrest. We also submitted over 160 letters of support from surrounding residents and business owners, including the Rivercrest Apartments, which is our neighbor, and I believe the president of Rivercrest is here to address that, and we also have the Las Olas Association here to speak in favor. I think very importantly, we did sign a letter agreement with Rivercrest Apartments that I think is very important. I want to submit that for the record. There are a number of commitments that the developer made to Rivercrest on behalf of the development. Most importantly, I believe, would be that we committed to, when we build the seawall for 808, we would improve the seawall and bring their seawall up to code concurrently with the construction of the seawall for 808, and we also agreed to build them a five-foot dock concurrently with the construction of the dock of 808. It also has a number of other important elements in it, including doing before and after surveys to ensure that no damage to the building, having a 24/7 construction contact to make sure that if there's any issues, they can be reached, silt screens, washing of the windows, washing of the cars. That's all. I'm going to submit the actual letter for the record so that that becomes site plan conditions if you're inclined to improve this project. And that is the end of my presentation. My team and I are all here, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Does the board have any questions right now for the applicant?
I've got one quick question, if I can. Stephanie?
Of course.
Do you know the mindset behind why the building was on a zero lot line on the eastern property line as opposed to the western property line?
I'm going to let, Jaime, I'm going to let you address that. I do know that on the eastern side, we did provide a big carve-out at the ground level, but I'm going to let Jaime address the orientation of the building.
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, we actually provided an easement on the right-hand side that is required. It's a five-foot easement, and also we carved out both of the sides of the buildings on the ground level to accommodate for landscaping and also open areas.
But you couldn't have put the easement and those other open areas on the opposite side? It seems like the building to the west is further away, at least through what you just showed us, it's like 42 feet away from the tower as opposed to 28 feet. I'm just trying to understand why, didn't try to shift it more to the west?
Understood. In the floor plan, actually, we have a big opening. I don't know if we can show that. We actually did, do we have the floor plan, the actual floor plan? We can see right here that image. This is the opening that we have towards the east building. So we have a lobby in that area, and it's open to natural light, and we have this garden and also water features developed in that area. So we also developed that opening, and the other side was mostly developed because it was a requirement, a five-foot easement requirement for public network, for public access, for civil, actually.
I think one of the other things, and I was going to try to bring up the other plan that shows the aerial, one of the reasons that there's a pinch point as it relates to the building on our east is because the orientation of their building sits on the property in a, see how it angles on the property? Most buildings are built either in an east-west orientation or a north-south orientation. Theirs is built on an angle, so it's really just that one, that one section of the building, which I believe is, again, I could be wrong, but I'm told that it's kitchen windows that face west. That's the point where the tower separation is at its smallest.
Can I interrupt this for a minute? Ella, could you have someone come up here and turn on the light system so people can put their lights and I can call on them? I don't have any system going. Okay. Raise your, Mary, you wanted to say something?
Well, I wanted to follow up with what Michael was asking.
You can take your mask off if you want.
Oh, thanks, Jackie.
Thank you.
But regardless of what the orientation of the building on the east is, just to follow up on what Mr. Weymouth asked, you still have a zero lot line setback?
But we carved out sections of the building at the ground level, and we took off sections of the building every floor up where it was at its closest.
Okay, I was just, from that last picture, it looked like the roof was like right up to the lot line.
No, I don't believe it is, no.
Okay, could you show that again?
The picture, the aerial?
Yeah.
That the, oh, that the building next to us is up to the lot line?
Between the two of you, he had a picture up showing the garden and the lobby.
Is this the picture, Mary?
Yes, thank you. It just looks like there's an overhang coming out right up to that fence. Is that not?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes.
Accurate, or?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay, so on the second floor up, it's going to be pretty much to the fence line. Okay, thank you.
Any other board members with questions right now for the applicant that are here in chamber?
Aye.
Does anyone virtually have a question?
I have a question. Thank you. I wanted to know, since you guys are the last, it looks like the zoning changes from you, from your project to the project next door.
Correct.
Was there ever, the project next door, did they ever put in for any kind of zoning change or anything like that? Do you know?
I don't believe, well, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if they've asked, if they've currently asked for a zoning change.
Did you know?
Correct.
Do you know if there was interest in them changing their zoning?
I have had those, yes, I've had those discussions with them, yes.
That's all I wanted to know.
Sherry or Jay, any questions for the applicant?
I have a question for Ms. Toothacre. Would you please describe your analysis of compatibility with the neighborhood?
I'd be happy to. So compatibility is driven by what the zoning tells you you can do, not what's there today. So you really have to look at the overall compatible, compatibility of the area in which you sit. When the city does an analysis, when they do a planning analysis, and they say, this is where we're going to draw the line of the RAC EMU, and we're going to make you transition because you are next to a different zoning category, compatibility is defined by what the code tells you you can do. So in this case, if we were RAC, one building over, we would not have to come down to the 137 six. But because we're next to something, that is the transition that's dictated by the master plan. That is the entire purpose of the line that you see here. So it transitions down from the more dense and intense buildings that you see all around us. So you can look, you can look to the, you can look to the north, you can look to the west, and you see as you go further into the RAC, those buildings become higher and they become more intense. That is, that is, in fact, what compatibility means. So we can't just go straight up into the air with no height limit because we sit next to something that's a bit smaller than us. So the code dictates your maximum height based on the fact that you are meant to transition down to that building, not because that building is 55 feet, are you limited to, say, 55 feet or 65 feet, you're limited to a multiplier against what their height is.
Thank you.
Is that all, Sherry?
Yes, for now, thanks.
I'd like to...
Okay, Jay, I'm sorry. Jay, do you have any questions for the applicant's attorney?
No, I'm fine. Thank you for checking, Jackie.
You bet.
I just had a follow-up question on Sherry's question. So Stephanie, on the property to the west of the applicant's property?
Yes.
Would they be required to transition down? And what would the criteria be on that property?
If they redeveloped, because they're not next to the residential, I don't believe that they would have to comply with the transition.
So what would the master plan say about their maximum height permitted then?
They would be dictated only by the zoning code without the transition. It's, we form the transition by coming down from what they would be allowed to do.
So what would that be, 300 feet?
With the RAC, yeah, yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board for the applicant? If not, would the board like to make the staff report part of the record?
I actually have some questions for staff.
Okay, let's hold on a second.
Do they have it now or later?
Take your mask off, just so I can understand what you're saying.
Questions, questions. I have questions for staff.
Okay. Do you want to make the staff report part of the record, or do you want to?
We can, but I want to ask the questions before we do, so...
Okay, go ahead, Mary. No problem.
Okay, I don't know, does someone?
Good evening, Jim Hetzel, Principal Planner and Case Planner for this project.
Hey, Jim, these probably aren't in any kind of order. First of all, just on the compatibility issue, I had noted that in your staff report. Do you want to explain your finding on page two of the revised staff report? I think it's page two, maybe it's page four, sorry.
Page four.
About, that it met compatibility?
Yes. As the applicant said, for compatibility, there's a lot of aspects that go into reviewing the compatibility aspect of a project. This is a little bit challenging because, as the applicant also said, to the east is not within the downtown RAC. It is a land use designation of 25 dwelling units to the acre, and it built to that under the zoning. To the west is within the Regional Activity Center, so it presents a unique challenge for staff to look at the analysis and say, what are you compatible with? As you look at both sides of the property, are different zoning, different land use, and so forth. So a little bit of a challenge. In the sense of what staff looked at was the density in the surrounding area, you know, what is the density overall to the east, and also what would be permitted in the RAC, and find a balance between the two. And that's what some of the analysis went in for a density perspective. As far as building design is concerned, we looked at the quality of material and the transparency of the building and how it's designed in its form, but recognizing that the applicant was not meeting some of the aspects that are in the design guidelines for intent-driven. So that also presents a unique challenge because, obviously, it's a request by the applicant to do something different than what the specific quantitative number is. But we look at that too to make sure that the overall design is compatible, so the windows, the balconies, transparency, the form and shape goes into the analysis that we do.
So even though this is in the transition zone, the building next door, should it redevelop or anything? What would it be?
When you say next door, to the west?
To the east.
To the east is outside the RAC, so it's a RMM 25 zoning district, so residential multifamily. It can go to 25 units per acre. The height is up to, I believe, 55 feet.
Okay, so there will be a difference. When you're looking at compatibility, you're only looking westwards, you're not looking eastwards.
We look at both, but they are, this property is within the RAC, so you have to take that into account that they're in the Regional Activity Center.
Okay. And then I wanted you just to comment on the fact of the downtown RAC 2016 unit summary found on page five, and so this RAC, so this project is asking, I guess I should have asked Stephanie this, but this project is asking for units, or they're included on the units, so when this is over, there are 96 units remaining?
Yeah, so this, the reason why this happened is because recently we had a project that was approved that changed its development program and left a balance in the Regional Activity Center pool of units. So before we dip into the flex units, we're going to have to go back and utilize what's available in the RAC units. So that's what that means.
Okay. And then when Ms. Toothacre was speaking, she spoke about an agreement that she had had, or an offer she had made, or whatever you want to call it, to the neighbor about building a dock. Has this been to Marine Advisory Board? Has this been to Marine Advisory Board?
I don't believe it has, no, because you guys, that would be a separate item if they're building a dock for adjacent property. It's not tied to this obligation, or we can't tie it as an obligation here.
And what?
It's proffered by the applicant.
Okay, and what permissions would they have to have to do that?
If it's a new dock, it goes Marine Advisory Board and you have to hold the appropriate permits for the dockage.
Just for clarification, we agreed to design, permit, and build the dock, so we would handle the permitting on their behalf with their consent.
And just overall, while you, while both of you are here, because this is on the New River, it doesn't require any waterway use permissions or anything. No one has to review the project in context of the water.
The dock proposed is only five feet.
Okay, not even just the dock, but the project itself?
No.
Doesn't require any waterway uses? Okay, thank you.
While you're standing there, Stephanie, did you also agree to raise the seawall, did I hear?
We did. We agreed, well, if we do a new seawall, you have to bring it up to current code, so.
Right.
So the commitment that we made to Rivercrest is that we would design, permit, and build the new seawall to the new code along with a new five-foot dock, the entire length of the property, of the Rivercrest property.
Okay.
Together with, they, then it would be higher than what's there, so we would also backfill and fix the landscaping and everything that goes with that.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Okay, is there any other questions for the staff? If not, do we wanna make the staff report part of the record?
I have one more question. This is Steve, Steve Gannon. I wanted to make sure from staff that they, the applicant does not need to request any kind of a waiver of variance for the 15-foot tower step back.
No, it's just.
It's confusing about whether their grandfather, the...
Absolutely, so just to be clear, it's not a variance of any sorts. It's not a official variance that we process, variances separately through a board of adjustment, that's not the case here. What this is, is basically, as the applicant was saying, they were submitted the application prior to the codification of our downtown master plan. At that time, when it was prior to that period, it was a design-driven document, meaning you had to meet design intent. So you could come in with something of, different from a quantitative number, as long as you're still trying to achieve the design intent. And that's the way the code was written before, that's not how it's written now, as far as it comes to downtown projects. So just to be clear, it's not a variance of any sorts or deviation in that sense, it's basically a request, but demonstrating that they still meet the intent.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of staff, virtually, here in the chamber? I'll entertain a motion to make this report part of the record, or we'll have Mr. Hetzel read it, whatever the board prefers.
I believe that we make the report part of the record, this is Jay Scheckman.
Thank you, Jay, is there a second?
A second, Brad Cohen.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're gonna open the public hearing, and I wanna remind everybody that you'll have three minutes to speak. We'll have you just line up, because I can't call names. When you come up, please adjust the microphone and take your mask off, so we can hear you loud and clear. You have five minutes. Sure. You've been sworn in. Is there anybody here in the chamber that came after the swearing-in? Has everyone here that wants to speak been sworn in? Okay, would you please stand, who has not been sworn in?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, hold on a second, Ellen, let me. Okay, please begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of planning and zoning. I'm Ellen Bogdanoff, represent a number of residents surrounding the area, and I just wanted to kind of approach a couple of issues that were, were mentioned by the applicant and kind of clarify our position. First off, for various reasons, probably not appropriate to discuss here, we do not believe that the appointed president of, of Rivercrest had the authority to act on behalf of the association with respect to the seawall. In the, in the agreement, it talks about the seawall up to $250,000. Because it was a late period of time, I briefly contacted a coastal engineer who does a lot of seawall work, only to find out that the seawall could be up to $350,000, which will obligate the residents for a significant amount more. It's not unlimited, it had a maximum on it. A lot of the residents were a part of the original meeting about two years ago, but didn't, according to them, did not receive notice about the Zoom. Whether it was sent out, it was in August, a lot of them were out of town, they did not participate in the Zoom, but it wasn't constant. If there was constant contact, it was probably with a select few people from one of the particular condominiums that they had conversations with. It was not a broad-based, it wasn't a broad-based conversation. The other thing is, is that I'm not going to disagree with the applicant that they have met a lot of the requirements under the code. However, where we believe that there is a challenge is under compatibility. I'm going to respectfully disagree with Ms. Toothacre that compatibility in itself has to be evaluated. It's not based on just a hun, you know, it could be 137.5 feet, because if that was the case, then it would just simply be there in the code and it would, that would, that's what it would be. The compatibility factor specifically says that you have to kind of respect the adjacent properties and look at it from a scale standpoint and a lot of other factors that's written in the code. It says mitigate adverse impacts such as traffic, noise, odors, shadow, scale, and visual nuisances and whatnot. We, we believe that this building, although could be attractive somewhere else, is completely out of scale to the area. Chateau Mar to the west is seven stories, and Rivercrest is five stories, then you go down to three stories, and then you go to single-family homes. The, it is in a transition section, which indicates that what you would have to do is kind of respect the immediate neighbors. We're not looking at a skyline and saying, what else is maybe two or three blocks away? Where it's going to offend people is in the immediate adjacent area. I would respectfully ask that we kind of revisit this project, that we have real meaningful discussions with a lot of the neighbors. I know for the particular association that Ms. Toothacre referenced, they have about 15 of the 25 residents that are opposed to this. So I'm not exactly sure, you know, where the conversations, they want, they are not anti-development, they want something to go there, but they would like to be a little bit more a part of it so that they can kind of engage and make sure that it is compatible with the neighborhood. I do know there was another project recently that was of a similar nature and had, was in that kind of area, and it was brought down to about eight stories, because I think the original was closer to 14 or 15 stories. So I would just ask for you all to listen to the neighbors, listen to the residents, and we are happy to work with the developer, and we know the property needs to be redeveloped, but it, it is going to offend the neighbors in particular to the east because of its mass, and we do not believe it's compatible.
Thank you. Any questions for the, okay, thank you very much. Okay, next speaker.
Is it okay for me to speak?
When you, when you come up here, please, please state your name, where you live, and speak into the microphone. And if you want to, you can all line up over there. It'll just make it faster and simpler. Okay, sir, go ahead.
My name is Mike Hartnett. I was not appointed president of the Rivercrest Association, I was voted president. We have five board members, we had a board meeting last night, we approved it, we've been working close with the developer and their representation, the architect, their team. We do support it as a board, we don't have any issues that we haven't addressed with them. Kevin Kennedy, our attorney, said that we were operating within the guidelines of the HOA law, which states that we can operate as the board in behalf of the residents, which I did. And I informed them as quickly as that we were able to put this deal together and that they were able to address all of our issues. As far as I'm, I'm concerned, I'm for the, the building, as was stated in the, in the previous discussions, that this building that's there is at the end of life, and it needs a new development, and we welcome the new building that's coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. So your HOA, your, your HOA basically functions with a board?
Correct.
Who probably worked the hardest, because nobody wants to get involved, and you're able to make the decisions on behalf of the people. And then when a controversy comes up, everybody says, they don't represent me, am I right?
Yes, you are, in fact.
I have the same issue.
There's 300 pages that I reviewed, I've been involved with this since the beginning, I was at the Riverside Hotel when Stephanie presented the building last time. There was people that talked about, you know, compatibility, and I basically went through all the documents, and I tried to work with them and asked them to kick back the building where, where it came closest to us, to the point where we actually measured distances from the edge of the building to see if they could lose those parking spots and, and not offend that area. And I also got involved in the project and said, look, you know, the only place that it touches our building the closest, you're talking about putting up a white stucco wall. I said, you gotta do better than that. So they agreed to put a green wall up that they're gonna be responsible for, to maintain, so that at least it's a little more appealing for the people that do face that building. And they, they've done everything that they could to make us happy.
Thank you for your comments. Next?
Can I ask him a question?
Oh, excuse me, one of the board members liked to.
Actually, I'm gonna ask Ms. Toothacre later, but you mentioned a meeting at Riverside.
Take your mask off, so we can all understand you.
Meeting at the Riverside, when was that?
Last night, we had a board meeting, and we invited all the owners.
Okay, and, but I mean, you said you had an initial meeting at the Riverside, when was that?
It was, it started when they actually had the meeting at, it's in the records, it was over a year ago.
Okay.
I, I don't know the date.
I'll, I'll ask Ms. Toothacre.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next speaker, please. Thank you, sir. Please state your name.
My name is George Colony, I'm in the real estate business here, and when they start talking about older buildings and dilapidated buildings, kinda takes me a little bit back because I'm pretty, getting pretty old myself. When I first moved here, that was one of the tallest buildings in town. Matter of fact, I didn't know, I can't even remember a building over 15 stories. So it is time to make a change with this building. I've known this building for several years, probably 20 years, and it's been, they tried to sell it, things didn't work out, but now I think is the time for it to happen. I represent a lot of people, but in my case, I'll just cut it short and tell you that we certainly recommend the building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Good evening, my name is Jody Tanner, and I am a resident, a long time, over 25 years in Rio Vista, resident, as well as I own a business on Las Olas Boulevard, and I'm a community activist. I really look forward to having a fantastic neighborhood and surrounding area in the city of Fort Lauderdale. I'm happy to be in support of this project, I think it's much needed for our community, and we, will we replace an aging building that so necessarily needs to have this happen right now. When you look at our city, you notice like a beautiful landscape, you look at a streetscape, and this like fits in perfectly with the master plan that a lot of folks in the city of Fort Lauderdale and Broward County put together for our beautiful city. We love the fresh design and architecture of the streetscape. Project designers have also, and, you know, happily taken a lot of input and consideration of the community members, which I think is really, really important, and I know they've been doing this for a couple of years, and as the, the team has said, they've really taken that input to heart, and they've changed a lot of things, as you saw, noticed before from their representation. I think the new updated building will bring residents who wanna put roots down in the community, they're gonna be part of the economic development of our community, and they're gonna be part of the changes. As you know, change and, and growth happens, and it's sometimes not so easy, but inevitably it's gonna happen. And I think this is a really positive step and all that. I think that this building is gonna be very aesthetically pleasing to everybody as a business owner, and also as a resident. We wanna look across the river, we wanna look to the river, we wanna look at our surrounding neighborhoods, we wanna look at the businesses, and we wanna see something beautiful. We wanna attract people here, we want them to come and say, Fort Lauderdale is fantastic, it's stunning. And we also think this is great because this is gonna, not, I don't think it's gonna be a huge traffic impact, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be impact on the walkability factor. These people that live here, they will be walking to our, our beautiful Las Olas Boulevard, they will be shopping and dining and going to our galleries and our hotels on Las Olas Boulevard, and I think it's really something that's needed right now. So, you know, with the minimum traffic impact and the change in growth that's, that's inevitable here, I think this is something that I really implore you guys to think about very hard, and it's gonna be a fantastic change, fantastic building. And please, I appreciate your input, and I appreciate you guys considering this thoughtfully. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Before we move on to the next speaker, I wanna let the people, Tricia, how many people do we have virtually that are gonna wanna speak tonight?
I think we have about 15 online to speak.
After the next speaker, we'll take two virtually, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, I am Captain Douglas McDaniel, I represent Chateau Mar condominium, and I believe as a representative of the association, I get five minutes, is that correct?
That'll be two of you, okay.
What do you mean, two of me?
I'm kidding you, 'cause Ellen spoke, that's fine. You got five minutes, sir.
First of all, I would like to say that Chateau Mar knew nothing of this deal that was done between a few board members at Rivercrest. In no way do we support any, we don't support this development of, at 808 in its present format. Now, we know something has to go in there, and we know what's gonna go in there will certainly be better than what's there, however, we have to consider livability equals compatibility. Now, I know compatibility was just, just defined by Stephanie in legal terms, but now we're talking about in human terms. I have lived next door as a, as a condominium owner at Chateau Mar for the past seven years. Ironically, I rented at 808 when it's rental for 18 years, and hence I have fallen in love with this stretch of the river. One of the things that I and my neighbors and fellow owners love is the fact that it is a quiet neighborhood. There is no way by putting a 13-story, 77th unit building in with a bar, with a dog park on top, et cetera, with all the traffic, I know it's gonna fulfill the traffic requirements, I know they met the sewage requirements, but now we're talking about the whole concept of sustainability. What I love about Fort Lauderdale is the building department is called the Department of Sustainability. What is sustainable about putting a 13-story building, cramming it in next to a seven-story building, going up to 13 stories and then going down to five stories? I would like each of you to visualize right now, standing at the Stranahan House, and turn around and look at the west tower of the Riverside Hotel. Start counting up stories. You're gonna get up to 12, you're gonna get up to 14, two more stories over that massive tower of the west side of the Riverside Hotel. Now, I want you to envision taking that slice of tower and squeezing it in between Chateau Mar to the west and Rivercrest to the east. That's what we're talking about. We ourselves, on our floor, on our building, we will face four floors of basic blankness. That is where the ramps would be, and our friends to the east, they are seeing another blank wall, and I understand there's mechanical lifts on that side. So there's also some issue with the mechanical lift for parking. There is no way going from the 12-story hotel at the Riverside down to seven-story Chateau Mar, jumping up to 13-story 808, down to five-story. There's no way you can say that means any definition of transition. I'm not a lawyer, I'm a yacht captain, and I know what is right. So think about the human factor of this project, not just looking at the numbers on the page. Now, should, now, we have not heard any discussion, Stephanie said, oh, I've been reaching out to neighbors, no, she's never reached out to us. That is not true. Having said that, should the stage, should we enter the stage where some type of negotiations, if you will, would occur, we, I'm prepared to speak on behalf of the other owners of Chateau Mar and Rivercrest, we had a brief conversation earlier, we would agree to a height reduction, a total of eight stories. Now, the developer will still make their money, all they have to do is reduce enough, they'll obviously reduce the number of units, but then they can increase the size. It is an extremely uniquely valuable piece of property. There is no road between the proposed 808 development, between Chateau Mar, between Rivercrest. Compare that to the Water Garden, compare that to the, the other condominium right there, the Las Olas Grand, they have a road between them. That's what makes this property so valuable. That's why I believe, should we be able to negotiate with the builder to cut down the size to more reasonable, livable height, they will still make their money. All they have, now, the plan that was projected, that was shown by Stephanie earlier, I don't know where that came from. We at the board at Chateau Mar, no one else ever saw that, that was in one individual. I agree, it makes no sense to come with, come with less units than what's there, that, that made absolutely no sense. So what I love about Fort Lauderdale, I've actually lived here since, I came down here from St. Petersburg, 1972, to finish up my college, I stay, stay here ever since, and what I love about it is the building department is... And what I love about it is the building department is called the Department of Sustainability.
Can you, can you wrap this up in twenty seconds?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What is sustainable about going from seven stories up to thirteen stories, down to five stories? That is hardly the definition of saying sustainability on a human level. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for coming this evening.
Can I ask you one question?
My, me?
Did you have a public participation meeting? Were you invited to a public participation meeting?
I don't know what you mean. No?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Brad, go ahead.
Do you think when your building was built, how tall is your building?
Um, seven stories.
Seven stories. How tall is the existing building now, uh, that is proposed to be fourteen stories? How tall is that building?
Um, in in feet, um, a hundred, I don't.
No, no, in floors.
In the new building, the proposed, well, they they claim thirteen stories, but there'll be a bar and a dog park. So in effect, it's really, I know they call it thirteen, but there'll still be amenities on the upper floor. There'll be a, a dog park. There'll be a bar.
I got it. Sir, listen, I'm asking how tall, how many floors is the existing building now next door to your seven-story building?
It's two stories.
Right. Do you think, were you in that building when, when it was built? Do you know when your building was built?
Okay, the building, um, the two-story building was built in nineteen fifty-six. No, I did not leave in that building when it was built.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Glad you came.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Betcha. Tricia.
We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. We will. Uh, Tricia, why don't we bring a couple, two or three people from virtual? I, please be patient. I want to get everybody in, you guys.
Okay, first we'll take Midge Clark Backowitz and then we can also bring in Patricia Norris and get her ready to go next.
Okay.
So just give, um, IT just a moment to bring them up. Midge should be able to unmute herself and speak.
I, I unmuted myself, I think. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Midge.
Okay, um, I am, um, sorry that I can't be there in person. Uh, to give you a, just a brief background, and I'm going to be as brief as I can. Um, I live at Rivercrest. I was, uh, the board president for six years. And I have worked very hard with the city, uh, both for new developments and for, um, what we think is, uh, appropriate developments. I, I am very, very, uh, pro-development, but one that I feel isn't going to be so horribly massive and intrusive to our building directly, ours and Chateau Mar's. Uh, the pedestal that Stephanie's talking about, it might have that first floor thing, but the wall is right on our zero lot line property. The, this parking structure, that actual solid wall goes up to the top of our building. It is not a, it is not like this beautiful thing you see. It might be beautiful on the first floor if you're walking by or if you're on the top floor looking down, but it is hardly something that we can do. And I am, um, I will tell you that I have personally talked to over eighteen of our unit owners at Rivercrest. And they are all against it. You're going to be speaking to a lot of them tonight that are. They are very upset that they were not told about this. The letter from Stephanie was delivered last night on a board meeting and no one really knew. They knew they were going to discuss, uh, something, but they, no one knew there was a letter being delivered. No one knew. And three board members voted for this. So I, I just can't, you know, I can't say anything except that I am very, very unhappy. Uh, and that I think that this is not, it is entirely out of character with surrounding neighborhood. And I hope that, uh, you will take my comments into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who do we have next, Tricia?
Our next speaker is Patricia Norris.
Yes, this is Patricia Norris. I've lived in the building, uh, Rivercrest since two thousand and five, but my family has been, my mother and uncle have lived in the building for nearly forty years. They're passed away now, but I've been familiar with the building for a long time and, and I agree with the assessment that such a large building with so many units is really not compatible with the street. If you think about that street, Southeast Fourth Street, um, from where it starts with Chateau Mar down to the corner, um, to Ninth Street, I guess it is, or Ninth Avenue. It's a very quiet street and adding that number of residents to the street, I think is going to be really destructive and change the nature of the street. We are only a block from Las Olas, but it still is a very quiet neighborhood street. And the more people we try to pack into that street, the less it's going to be a neighborhood street. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, let's move back to the chambers and let's hear the next speaker, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, just one thing, um, and it's really up to you because you're the chair. Um, the folks who are at home, they're probably sitting on a nice comfy couch right now. They can walk to a bathroom. They probably have a glass of wine.
Okay, 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 okay.
These poor people are all standing in line. Let's get through these people.
The only reason I did is sometimes people.
Oh, I know. I get it.
Oh, they're never gonna get.
But after I looked at their poor faces, I'm thinking, we should not be talking to these people at home right now, so.
I'm just as compassionate as him, so don't worry. Okay, next speaker.
Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Board. My name is Jerry Jordan. I live two blocks away from this, uh, project at eleven oh nine Southeast Fourth Street. I've been active in the area since I bought my house in nineteen eighty. And I was the Kohli Hammock Home Innovation President and was fortunate enough to serve on two city advisory boards. You've received a lot of correspondence from all the people in the condos right next door. Uh, from, and, uh, I'm going to talk about something a little bit different, the whole neighborhood. I've been kind of representing the whole neighborhood. Uh, our neighborhoods like Kohli Hammock and Beverly Heights consist mostly of low-rise residential buildings. And we've always been concerned with proposed buildings that are not be compatible with the surrounding area, like the two adjacent condos you heard are five and seven stories. And I just want to speak very generally, generally about against tall buildings in our area. We're, we are not the downtown area with lots of tall buildings. They're to our west. We are more of a residential area and low-rise residential of many two-story and one- and two-story homes. And, uh, the low-density condos along Southeast Fourth Street, they add some ambiance to the area. The reason you like our area, I've been there forty years, is because it's ambient, it's not, it's not, uh, uh, concrete canyon, skyscrapers. Uh, my Kohli Hammock neighborhood that I represent is the second oldest neighborhood in the city. They're a little tiny shack, so we call them craftsmen houses, built way back when. It was established in nineteen sixteen. And adjacent Beverly Heights is our neighbor, neighbor, and they were established sometime thereafter. Uh, we, we were here, uh, I was there a long time before the Las Olas got too developed. And, uh, I, I just say that I've spent my time being a guardian of the area. You know, we want development. I've been a general contractor since nineteen seventy-nine. I like development. I like construction. But too much is, uh, too much to ask. Um, and, uh, we've, uh, over the last, um, decades, we have, developers have come into our neighborhood. A four, uh, four-story parking garage wanted to be built there, block long. That condominium wanted to be built in our area. And we fought them and won. We, we want development, but not too big. And, uh, and I, my concern as a general contractor is we're like, you know, you're going to hear a lot of other concerns. Mine concern like rainwater. Southeast Fourth Street, uh, kind of floods sometimes in heavy rain. I don't, hopefully the infrastructure is going to be solid. I kind of deal with that. It's going to be, you know, our, and right now there's sewer pipes laying in, uh, the north of, uh, Las Olas Boulevard and Tenth Avenue, uh, because, uh, we've had major floods. I live on Hamarshi Canal. Hamarshi Canal had a major sewer break and they've had over twenty thousand gallons of sewers in Hamarshi Canal. It has not been repaired yet since two thousand and sixteen. Uh, the city, oh, we're going to do something. They do nothing about it. So, uh, I'll get out of here. I just want to thank you. We don't care for a tall building. We want to work with the folks. But it's, we don't want a concrete canyon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. I think the city is working on cleaning it up, just for the record.
I've been here and that for a long time, another twenty years.
It's a tough group. Okay, hold on a second. Okay, next speaker?
Yes, good evening. Planning and Boarding, uh, Zone of Fort Lauderdale. My name is Robert Sogstedt. I live at the River Crest and I'm a board member. And we've been tossing around some words like compatibility and transition. And I want to talk more about what came up about this, so, this letter sent out by the developer. I'm on the board. The meeting was last night. We received this so-called letter by uh, email on October nineteenth. Mike Hartnett, who just spoke, is our president. He's the only one that's been negotiating with the developer. Other than four or five people, I know this for a fact, in our building knows anything about this letter. We haven't been able, I've been trying to get it out myself. The people on Zoom may have gotten it. It's the first time they've, we, they've ever seen this. Uh, that's important. I disdained, or abstained, excuse me, from uh, in the vote. There were four of us, one, there's five of us, one of us out of the country. There were four of us and I did that because I didn't feel that I was representing the rest of the condominium association because no one knows anything about this except four or five people. That's a fact. Because we got it late, the night before our board meeting. Uh, another thing. I was born here a hundred years ago and, uh, moved down here about, I've been, my parents owned the unit that I live in, uh, prior to me moving in. Uh, Ms. Toothaker referred to our building as being old. It's an old building, nineteen sixty-four. It's steel and concrete. When I moved down here, my wife being a designer, I put a bundle of money into our place to make it beautiful. Our units have all been renovated. I invite you all over for a cocktail party. I'll give you a tour of the interior of our new, of our, they are beautiful. They are, they will rival anything next door. My issue with next door is the, is the fact that it's a behemoth. They're, 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 um, uh, shoehorning this, this building in just to get it, make as much money as possible. I worked in New York. I understand that. I, I was delighted to hear a building was going up there. I can't, I'm all for, like most of us, I'm all for development and a new building. I have to be. Mary, I want to appreciate, and no, thank you for taking my phone call the other day. She rec, my middle name is Stillwell. My, my grandfather was Thomas Stillwell. He was a pioneer that built this city. You can all look it up if you, you may already know that. You know that the islands north, uh, north of, uh, Las Olas are called Stillwell Isles. My grandfather, Mary lives in Idlewild, built by my grandfather. Of course, I would love to see a building in there, but not this building. Something that fits the neighborhood. Going from, uh, Chateau Mar seven to our building i- is five. Next to us is a residence, next to that is the water taxi, the, uh.
I apologize. I have to cut you off.
I'm sorry.
In all fairness, sir, for everybody. Um, thank you very, very much. I think Mary has a question for you, however.
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused about this board, so I'll probably ask everybody on the board as you come up. There are five members of the board, is that correct, of Rivercrest?
That's correct.
Correct? And when did you receive this letter that is being discussed?
October nineteenth at four P M.
Okay.
The board meeting was, the board meeting was the next day at six o'clock. No one, I guarantee you that more than half our members know nothing about it.
Okay, okay. So, all right, that's just what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hello, I'm Kathy Haynes. Um, I've lived at Rivercrest for.
Kathy, bring the mic closer to your.
Twenty-one years I've lived at Rivercrest. Um, I used to teach the history of architecture at Brower College and I love old buildings and I really am teary now, thinking that you all are talking about my street needs to be redeveloped. I bought my apartment because I loved my period building. And there's twenty-five units and all twenty-five of them have a view of the river. And all of them have been remodeled with the exception of mine. And they're beautiful. I would put them up against anything anybody builds next door. I agree that eight oh eight needs to be developed. It used to be a dormitory for a college, I think. And it's thirty-five little efficiencies and it's very well kept. They, they have, all the units are rented, thanks to me. I was the realtor there for years. Um, so I'd love to see something on that lot, something really nice, but I don't want it to destroy my building. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Vince Petroselli. I'm a resident of Rivercrest. I just have a procedural question, um, prompted by the, uh, the developer's attorney, who said that if, uh, we were judging this project by the new master plan or the new regulations, I'm not sure of the terminology, we would be having a different discussion. I would like to know, if the board can tell me, just because a plan is submitted prior to a change in regulation, does that mean that the the plan has to be approved under the, uh, criteria of the prior regulation? Or do you apply, uh, the contemporary, the latest regulations to approve a plan even though it was submitted prior to the, um, to the, uh, to the change in regulation? It seems to me that, um, approval process is the issue. If, for example, that this project had been approved under the old regulations, I, it seems to me that it would qualify for the characterization, uh, made by the, uh, the developer's attorney. However, it's, it hasn't been. Am I, I think I'm correct. It hasn't been approved yet. And I, I seem to think we should have that conversation based on the new regulations because this project was submitted but not approved, uh, prior, uh, to, to the, uh, to the new regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thanks for listening to me. Uh, I moved here only a year and a half.
Can you state your name and where you live, sir?
I beg your pardon?
Can you state your name and where you live?
My name is, is Sam Levin. Uh, I'm a PhD economist and, uh, I studied city planning under John Reps and Bill Goldsmith at Cornell. Okay, I qualified myself, uh, to the extent I can. Uh, the, the bottom line here, I think, is if this project gets approved, what is going to really prevent, uh, more fourteen-story structures from dwarfing, uh, the skyline and actually, uh, changing the nature of Las Olas Boulevard itself? Uh, you know, the, the pressure on you will become unsustainable at some point when more and more of large projects are thrown at you and the, the problem of getting extra revenue for the city becomes, uh, an imperative. So I'm concerned about that. I know that the mayor, uh, when he was running for reelection, talked about maintaining the character of neighborhoods. Now, he got elected and, uh, presumably that was the will of the people. You know, at least, at least until the next election. Uh, and so it, it seems to me that both from a long-term structural, uh, point of view and also from, uh, a local character point of view, this is a destructive development. Uh, you bring it down to eight stories or seven stories and it fits in. If you let it go to fourteen, then, uh, eventually, uh, some of my, uh, neighbors at Chateau Mar uh, are going to start lobbying to sell to somebody else who has sixteen or eighteen stories. And they'll point to the fact that the Riverside is only a few, um, uh, blocks away. And gee, you know, why don't we sell out and, and, uh, cash in? And gee, you know, why don't we sell out and, and cash in? And I think the pressure on residents and the pressure on the board will become impossible to resist. So I'm happy to take questions, but it seems to me that this is actually a time for choosing for you, whether you want the character of this niche neighborhood to remain as generally as it is or whether you want to put 15, 20, 30-story buildings right around the corner from Las Olas. And it seems to me that those are, that's the question. You know, you have a choice to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Adam Adashi. I'm a Fort Lauderdale native. Think it's, I'm a developer and a general contractor. Think it's important to clarify that although I share the last name with the architect, I'm not the architect. And although I'm a developer, I have no economic interest in the project. So I think the project, from everything I've seen, seems to meet the intent of the downtown master plan and from the new River master plan. It replaces an aging building built in 1958 with a brand-new sleek, contemporary, structurally-safe design and will really only benefit the surrounding property values, which is good for any community. I believe the city should encourage sensible development that is, is within, within the code. That's defined within the plan that they make. The developers should be encouraged to make investments and to plan projects that fall within the city code and guidelines. And they should also have reassurance that if the plans and codes are met, that they will be protected. That the developer is, you know, as far as everything I've seen, is not in front of anyone right now asking for a variance, asking for something outside of the current code. From everything I've seen, it falls within the perimeters and guidelines set forth by the city. I, I think the project complies with the, you know, with the master plan. And I'm a supporter of the project. I think it, I think the project should be approved. So I think that, that really, that really the, the project, I mean, I heard some comments earlier today about, you know, some of the neighbors and understanding that, you know, some of the plight and understanding some of the concerns, that they would accept an eight-story building. I think that, I think that I heard that there's a two-story building to the one side and there's a seven-story building to the other side. I heard concerns about, you know, about the, the current subject project blocking views. I think an eight, an eight-story building would block views of a seven-story building and block views of a two-story building in the same fashion that a 12- or 13-story building would block. So, you know, I do think the project meets the intent of the code and I think it should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jackie Casoya-Guberman. And as I think is a little bit more and more of a rarity these days, I'm actually also born and raised in Fort Lauderdale. I was born at Brower General, my husband was born in Holy Cross. We met on Las Olas and we absolutely love this city. I now conduct business in this city. When we first got married, we lived in Flagler Village, which as many of the people in this room know, is an area that didn't even exist and it wasn't redeveloped until, you know, years later, when I was in high school, it didn't even exist.
Can you speak in the microphone a little better?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can adjust it, pull it up.
Oh.
There you go.
Okay. So while that area worked when we were in our twenties, now that we've just had a baby, what I think you'll find my peers, which is young professionals, millennials, are really seeking in this city is housing for people who want life, nightlife, building amenities, culture diversity, and they really want that live, work, play atmosphere. But also kind of a neighborhood feel, which I think is kind of unique. As, you know, we've said in this property, it kind of blends those two. So I think tasteful projects like this one allow our city to grow in a way that attracts young professionals with young families and keeps people like myself here and my peers here. It's definitely a conversation amongst friends of mine, keeps our tax dollars here. So I think that that's something that's important to consider for the generation that's up and coming in this neighborhood now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Lauren Einhorn. I'm here, I just want to thank you for letting us go ahead. My heels are hurting me, so I appreciate it.
Thank John Baran.
I'm here as a Fort Lauderdale resident, also a local real estate attorney, but I'm here more on a personal aspect. I do live right outside of downtown. I've been trying to get back into downtown near the Las Olas area. There's nothing for me to buy, there's nothing for me to go to. And as most of you know, COVID has impacted our lives and our work area and the way we work. And a lot of us are remote now. And a lot of us are looking for that live, work, play environment. We're not driving or commuting to work anymore. We're working from home and walking to restaurants nearby. And much like the previous speaker said, our generation is looking for this. I have a ton of friends coming from the Northeast, nowhere to live, and they're looking for exactly this building. And I just want to say I'm in favor of the project. I really hope it's approved and hopefully I can buy one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening, everybody. Luke Mormon, I'm the current president of the Las Olas Association. Let me start by saying thank you to all of you on the board and the city staff. It's a thankless job you guys do. And I know it takes a lot of time and energy that you don't even see tonight, all those hundreds of emails and telephone calls. I can appreciate that and I really do. The developer reached out to the association. We did a Zoom meeting with our members. And Ms. Toothacre presented, we did not receive any negative comments from the Las Olas Association members. With that being said, we did submit a letter of support to this board. On a personal level, we do own, my family owns a single-family residence in Beverly Heights, and we are in support of development. What it appears is that you have a lot of people working over many years to develop a long, thought-out process for the city of Fort Lauderdale. When you, when you draw lines on a map and say, this is what we're going to do. And so it's a difficult position for you guys when it seems to fall right in slot with voting for yes. And you've got a large community. I know most of the projects don't have this type of intensity, but I think it's a great thing for the city to continue to develop. It wasn't that long ago that Las Olas Boulevard closed up for the summertime. Businesses locked their doors and they went to Michigan and opened Michigan during the summer. And we had no business in the city of Fort Lauderdale. That's not what the city we have today is. The city is developing and it's a much bigger dream, much bigger local neighborhood-type feel than it's ever been. And I'm happy to be a part of it and thank you for tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay. Clear this, repeat. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Gerald Fritz and I'm a neighbor at...
Can you bring the microphone up to your...
Sure, my name is Gerald Fritz. I'm a neighbor at Chateau Mar. And I just really believe that development should happen, no doubt about it. You know, this place, it, you know, people bought it. I think they paid way too much for it as a commercial guy. But, and they're trying to make as much money as they can off of it. I understand that. But it's just way too big of a project, it seems like. It's going to be like living next to a parked cruise ship, a 14-story cruise ship. That's going to be sandwiched right in between these two properties. The lot lines don't seem to make sense. I don't really understand there. I'm not sure if somebody here was lying, but somebody said there was no variances. But, you know, given the current code, but the current code, you're not, they're not even abiding by the current code. They're abiding by a plan that was put in place a long time ago. It wasn't guaranteed. They should go by the current code. That's enough.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Coleman Pruitt and I reside at 411 North New River Drive. It's a little odd, this setup.
The wrong side.
Anyway, you can't really tell from my address, but I live three blocks due west of this project. From my front balcony, from my front window, I look over this parcel every day. I can't see the improvements because of the building adjacent to it. I know you've had a lot of input, you've got more to go, so I'm going to keep this really brief. A year ago, this board talked about the transition zones. But for the transition zone, the permitted height on this lot would be 300 feet. This board and the city made a judgment call. We came up with that formula and I think it works out to 137-something and change. That was a decision that we made. I think that's the basis for compatibility. People talk about lowering the height. We've already established what that means. And I think we established that for the perimeter of the rack everywhere. And it's important to follow those rules. I think that's very important. Secondly, something a lot of people haven't talked about, but I walked on Fourth Street a lot, especially during the pandemic. We're all doing that because nobody wants to go to a gym. When I'm particularly energetic, I even run down the street. Anybody who goes down the street notices that there's not a sidewalk on the south side of the street and there's the back-end parking, which is a little bit dangerous. This project, for this parcel, solves most of those problems. There's no more back-end parking, or back-out parking, and there's a sidewalk there. It's not going to change the entire street, but it's an important step in the right direction to make the street safer, to make the street more beautiful. So to conclude, I know you guys have a long evening. I support this project, I hope you support it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We miss you, Coleman.
Oh, Brad said hi. Okay, next speaker.
Good evening, I'm Jim Noggle and I'm speaking tonight, I'm not being compensated, but I'm speaking on behalf of Al and Claire Perry, who own Unit 303 at Rivercrest. They're 91 years old and Claire recently broke her hip. Al's taking care of her, he couldn't appear tonight. He's very much opposed to this development. He never had any notice of any sort of meeting. And I wonder if you did have a board meeting to take such an important action on a financial transaction for a quarter of a million dollars payment, I would have thought you would have needed some sort of notice and, and that sort of thing before you can just call a meeting and vote on something like that. But I, the Perrys feel that this is going to dramatically reduce the value of their unit. They're worried about their loss of light and view. And also they're concerned about the zero setback that's on the east side of the building. The wall won't even be able to be maintained without the condo association next door trespassing on their property. It's impossible. It should have, it should have been way back. I also serve on the city's police and fire pension board and we invest in real estate. And sometimes we buy core real estate, sometimes we buy value-added real estate. This is an example of a New York, New York developer buying a little parcel in Fort Lauderdale as a value-added real estate investment. And the formula for success is you buy the most successful, you hire the most successful and prolific attorney in town, you get a high-quality architect, you get all the consultants that do the best job, and you try to cram as much development rights into that parcel to add value to the parcel. But sometimes when you add that value, it takes value away from the neighbors. And I think that's, that's what's happening here. I feel that Beverly Heights and Cooley Hammock should be treated the same as Rio Vista was treated on Aviva Rio Vista. That was, the developer came in, asked for a 21-story building. It's in the RAC city center, not even in the transitional area. The city reduced it from 21 stories and 181 units down to eight stories and 90, and 96 units. So Mr. Levin, I think it was, talked about planning. And this isn't just about one building tonight, it's about the whole street and changing the character of that part of the river. This is directly contiguous to RMM 25 property. So it is in the transition area. It's also across the river from R1 property, or RS8, they call it now, which those buildings are a maximum height of 35 feet. So it's the absolute corner of the transition area. There's no way that this 14-story building is compatible with the neighborhood. And I ask you tonight not to reduce the value of the Perry's property. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the chamber that wishes to speak? Okay, Tricia, do we have people virtually?
Yes, we have several signed up. We'll take Jean Drake first. It's a call-in number, ending in 7010. They can unmute themselves now. Jean, are you there?
Jean, please press star six to unmute, star six to unmute.
Okay, we can come back. The next person is Paul Burkhart. Paul should be able to unmute himself now.
I think I just unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Paul Burkhart. I am an owner of a unit at Rivercrest, Unit 301. I don't want to repeat all the points that everybody else has made. But I would like to say that my particular unit is on the east side of Rivercrest. I'm really not dramatically impacted by what is happening to the west. I'm not going to have a concrete wall five stories high. I'm still going to retain my river views. So I don't really have the same point that other people in the building do that live closer to this building. But I do object to the building. I object to the building because of its impact on the area, the fact that it's going to change the nature of the neighborhood and that it's not in compatibility with the neighborhood. I just have to speak again, what other people have said is totally out of proportion with neighboring properties. Zoning regulations regarding height setback and other technicalities may or may not allow this development. But the quality of life issues should not allow this property as presented to be approved. I like old Fort Lauderdale. Our neighborhood is old Fort Lauderdale. Our buildings are attractive. They are representative of a certain architecture at a point in time. They're low-rise, it's just wonderful to walk down Southeast Fourth Street. Moreover, it's wonderful to walk down Las Olas where it's parallel to our street. It's low-rise, it's charming. To see it turned into what has happened to the west of us with all those monumental high-rise buildings seems so inappropriate to have it happen now where there is the opportunity to preserve the charm of old Las Olas. I just want to add, I'm not a permanent resident of Fort Lauderdale. I've been coming down since 1968. I'm an old man, I've been around for a long time. But in my community, houses are being torn down, mansions are going up. And finally zoning boards and architectural review boards are listening to the constituents and are looking at quality of life and compatibility issues. They're finally listening and builders listen, they adjust and make projects compatible or they're not approved. I am an owner at Rivercrest. Our president has spoken tonight. He apparently has negotiated a deal. Members of the building have not been informed of this at all. The only way we have had any idea that anything has been going on is as a result of scuffle butt. We have not been consulted. I think I heard one of you ladies or gentlemen make a comment that, oh, pity the officers running a condo and then people object when they find out about things. But we have not been informed. It's too bad that we don't have a united front. It's too bad that we couldn't analyze this and see whether it's truly a benefit to Rivercrest. It could be, it could not be. Frankly, even if they give us $250,000, I object to this building because it is not compatible with the charm of old Fort Lauderdale. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Tricia, do we have anyone else to speak?
Yes, our next speaker is Natalie Kay. She should be able to unmute herself now. Okay, it looks like she's not unmuting herself, so we'll move on to Hal Braverman. Hal can unmute himself.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Hal, go ahead.
Yes, hi, I'm an attorney in the area and I fully support this project. I'm very enthusiastic about it. And we need buildings that are going to attract younger people who want to be around nightlife and also have a professional life. So I'll just keep it brief and leave it at that. Thank you.
Hal, where do you live?
I currently live in Boca, but I went to school in Davie and I lived in New River. And I went out there a lot. I hung out with friends. It's a great area, but it needs buildings like that to attract people like me.
You got it, thank you, Hal.
Okay.
Kay, our next speaker is Clara Wulman. Clara can unmute herself.
Yes, I can hear you, Clara.
Okay, good, awesome. So, hi, I'm Clara Wulman and I'm a...
So, hi, I'm Clara Wulman, and I'm a, I guess, I'm a resident at 808 Southeast Fourth Street. So I've been, I signed a lease in 2020 in January, and actually, I've been, I'm joining from Boston right now. I'm a Trevor Nurse, so unfortunately, I can't be there physically, but I actually am virtually joining. So it seems like we've heard a lot from River West, also Chateau Mar residents. So basically, some are for it, some are against it, but as a resident myself, so if this goes through, then like, what do I have left? Like, do I need to pack up and leave, or would I be compensated by the developer for relocating because? Hello?
We don't answer questions, ma'am. That's not our position. We're here to either approve or deny this request, so we'd like your input as to what your feeling is about the project. We can't answer questions.
As a resident of 808, I'm totally against it because I haven't heard anything about this development, but I actually had, I found it out on my own. And actually, I joined last month, September, the zoning meeting, and I guess this was deferred to October meeting, so it's months later. I don't know what's going to happen now, so I'm definitely against it because like 14-story building within the neighbor, it's going to be just, it's going to stick out like a sore thumb, I have to say, so.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay, do we have another speaker, Tricia?
Yes, we have another speaker. The next one is Anton Bolick.
Okay, Anton.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, sir.
Excellent. A lot has been said about the compatibility. It's obvious that it's not compatible and ruins the feel of old Fort Lauderdale, at least that's Southeast Fourth Street. We have tapering from hotel over Chateau Mar over Rivercrest and then down to the residential houses. This will be ruined, as cruise ship, as one put it nicely. I would also like to point out that we've heard many people speaking tonight, and it's symptomatic that in favor of the project are the people who don't live in the neighborhood and who are financially vested with the developer and probably paid by them, so I really resent that type of support because it reeks of conflict of interest. I also would like to point out the fact that jamming the cruise ship between Rivercrest and Chateau Mar would call for major, major digging for the foundation, which could disturb foundations of both buildings to the left and to the right, and I would really love some study that could prove that people's lives would not be in jeopardy when all this is done, if approved. So I would also like to remind everyone of the North Miami tragedy, and I would like everyone in committee to think twice before you make your decision and live with it. We had, at Chateau Mar, we also had a major shifting of the terrain at the swimming pool, so that's the riverside, which basically indicates that it's not everything stable there, and that we should be very, very careful when we consider this type of a project. That's all that I have, and I wish you wisdom in your decisions.
Thank you very much for attending. Tricia, do we have other speakers?
Yes, our next speaker is Leanne Deuser.
Okay. Leanne, you're up.
We're just getting her set up to speak. She should be able to unmute herself now.
Leanne, are you on?
It doesn't look like she's unmuting herself, so our next speaker is Gregory Morris. He should be able to unmute himself now. He's also not unmuting himself. That's all I have on my list for this item.
Do they unmute themselves?
You've got somebody here in chambers, too.
Okay, do they know how to unmute themselves, Tricia?
It's, they are on the Zoom application, so it's just a matter of turning off and on the microphone.
If they unmute themselves, we'll get back to them before we close the public hearing. Is anybody else virtually?
We have one person who just raised their hand, Marcia Sepulitz.
Okay, Marcia, go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. We live in Chateau Mar, and my husband has a CV of structural engineering for more than 1,000 projects that he did on his life, and he is really very worried about the situation, the digging, the dip of the digging in the new building, because for sure, Chateau Mar is an old building. We don't know how it was, the foundations were done, and he knows about the kind of, in front of the river, that's very, a soft soil, so he is really very worried. I don't want to mention the other situations, but this is a kind of life. He is, I'm telling you, he worked for 1,000 structural projects. From name it, you can see his CV, but he is really very, very worried about the digging of this, how deep the foundations will go. So that's what I have to do, to say, sorry, my poor English.
No, you did very well. Thank you so much. Okay, Tricia, any other?
We don't have anyone else signed up to speak. If anyone else would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand virtually.
Yeah, we have, we have a lady here in the chamber that would like to speak.
Okay, I'll keep you updated if anyone else raises their hand.
Okay, go ahead. Please state your name and where you live. You can take your mask off.
My name is Martha Cromer. I live at 818 Southeast Fourth, and I couldn't help but noticing that this is kind of devolving into a war between the old fogies and the slick urban professionals, which I think is hilarious. I keep hearing, oh, this is going to pull us all in town, and hey, the, you know, the Las Olas lifestyle, and yet you look around, and there are bazillion everywhere you look. There are high-rise apartments and condos. What there isn't really much of is this lovely little old-fashioned street, and it's, so it's a specious argument to me, and I get what it's about. It's like, hey, we're going to revitalize, but it's, we have so much revitalization going on. Let's preserve this one charming little street in a charming little neighborhood. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to speak? Is there anyone virtually ready to speak?
I don't see anyone else raising their hand or unmuting themselves.
Okay, I think we should close the public hearing. And would the applicant's attorney like to use their last four minutes?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to reiterate, there was a second public participation meeting. We took a, we hire a company, that's a company that does this for everybody. They do a certified role of residents in the area. They draw a circle 300 feet around the property line, and they send out notices to everybody. We held that via Zoom, and we had a lot of people attend, so it sounds like some people are questioning whether we had that. I just think it's really important that you know that there was a second one, and it was just a couple months ago, prior coming to this. We also, as you know, were scheduled for a planning and zoning board hearing that we deferred to accommodate the attorney that asked to accommodate her vacation schedule, so we did that as well. So I think everybody had ample notice. I want to say that we are very, very pleased that we were able to reach an agreement with Rivercrest, and, you know, we stand by it. We stand by the improvements and all of the commitments that we made to Rivercrest. And I do also want to state that the comments that Mr. Pruitt made about the transition zone really speak to the heart of the issue. When this board voted and then the City Commission voted to adopt the plan, they discussed transition zones. We are in the transition zone, which causes us to bring the building down to 137, 137 feet, six inches. This building complies. It was also questioned what I said about the time that we applied. This building, this building was designed to the code that stood at the time that we made application to the city of Fort Lauderdale. We've been in the process for a long time because we were working with our neighbors. Maybe we didn't speak to every single person in this chamber, but we certainly held public participation meetings, and we met with anybody that reached out to us. Some of the people that stood up here tonight were people that we reached out to, to offer meetings to. Some of them took us up on it, and some of us didn't. Some of them didn't. But the master plan very clearly has a statement in it that says that the buildings that were in process at the time of the adoption of the master plan are entitled to avail themselves of the rules at the time that they submitted. It's very clearly in the master plan. It's in your staff report, and I would ask that you consider that when you consider this building, and we thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a question for, if I may, Madam Chair.
Of course, sir.
Stephanie, I got a question for you, and I don't want an answer just yet because I think you may want to huddle with your client just to ask. I alluded to it at the beginning about the positioning on the property lines, and you are the first property in from the RMM 25.
Yes.
I'd be, and I'll bring it up later on after we've had our lengthy discussion, would it be something that your client would consider is shifting it to the western, make the western property line the zero lot line, giving some buffer, maybe five feet. Five feet versus zero is a lot, you know, and I heard somebody bring up maintenance and that kind of thing, so I will ask that again later.
Okay.
But I just want to put that out there. Also, I've got one question for staff, if I may.
Sure, you've got the floor.
So they're in under the old downtown master plan, and we have since adopted a new one. If this measure fails tonight and they reapply, does it come back under the new downtown master plan?
So the project's actually subject to City Commission requests for review, so the commission would ultimately be able to call the item up if they wish.
But still, his question was if it were to fail, I think your question was, would it then be subject to the new, or do you continue to go with the previous?
It's the same project. It's subject to City Commission requests for review, so ultimately, the authority could lie with the City Commission.
But if the city doesn't call it up and they decide to reapply, would it be under the new downtown master plan?
The new one, yes.
I'm sorry?
The new one.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
The new one, Mary.
The new one.
Thank you.
Jackie.
Yes, John?
May I ask one question to applicant counsel?
Please.
Miss Toothaker? One question. One of the speakers tonight spoke about, well, several, spoke about monitoring of the adjacent structures for the duration of the shell construction and any of the underground work. Is that something that you guys have thought about, and will you be addressing that?
That's actually in our commitment letter to Rivercrest, and we would also do that for Chateau Mar. We didn't have an agreement with Chateau Mar, but we would do, so we, it's a pretty long paragraph, so I'm not going to read it to you, but what it says is that we will, we will do a survey and a structural review of the building with a report that is certified to Rivercrest prior to any construction, and then again, at the end of construction, to ensure that there's nothing that happened to their foundation or anything of that sort. That commitment is written in the letter to Rivercrest, but we would be pleased to offer that as a condition to Chateau Mar as well.
Is there any mention of like seismic monitors or actual monitors?
Yes, it does. I can read it if you want me to read the actual.
You know, I'd feel comfortable if you did, you know, considering what's happened recently and it brought up, and I think it'd be remiss if we didn't read it into the record and let everybody know, because God forbid anything ever happens. I just want to be sure that everybody's aware that it was done.
So the agreement says, it's divided into two sections. It's titled engineering. The first section says surveys. Developers shall pay directly or reimburse Rivercrest the reasonable cost of pre and post-construction surveys by a major engineering firm agreed to by the developer and Rivercrest. The pre-construction survey shall identify the current cosmetic and structural conditions of Rivercrest, including foundations, parking garages, pool decks, parking lots, and other structures. The post-construction survey shall compare the pre and post-construction conditions to determine if there are any adverse changes resulting from the project's construction. Rivercrest agrees to provide access to its property for developers' installation of vibration monitoring devices on Rivercrest property if doing so will provide more accurate measurements. If the parties cannot agree on the existence of any adverse changes resulting from the project's construction, or if the cost of repair of adverse changes resulting from the project's construction, then they agree to submit to arbitration. It goes on to say, any cost of repair resulting from the project's construction shall be borne by the developer. Then it goes on to say, with an engineering report prior to construction, and again, upon completion of the project, developers shall pay directly or reimburse Rivercrest for the cost of an engineering report by a major engineering firm agreed to by the developer and Rivercrest.
That's your question, John?
Yes.
Good. Mary?
Um, oh.
Please take your mask off, because I have terrible hearing. That just makes it worse.
Well, I guess that's what happens as we get older, huh?
Exactly.
We've heard a lot about that tonight.
It was a dig, wasn't it?
Okay, so I, she knows it's a joke.
I couldn't hear you either.
Couldn't hear me either, so see what I mean? It happens. So let me see if I'm getting this right, because there's been, you know, it's kind of, I can see where, if you were a member of the public, it might be confusing. You adopted the transition height, as Coleman said, that we approved when we redid the master plan. Was it planning and zoning of September 2020? But that same time, we talked about build, we talked about setbacks, and it doesn't, you know, I think it's great that you went with a height, but I'm just curious, the setback, I mean, a zero setback.
We meet the setbacks.
Well, you meet them under the old.
No, we meet them under the new, too.
You meet them under the new, so it's a zero setback either way.
Correct.
And it borders, it borders a neighboring building that is under a whole different set of criteria.
Yeah, because it was built in the 60s. Yeah, of course. Yes.
Well, their zoning, that remains the same.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from any board members virtually or in the chamber? And I think Bill Rotella has a question.
Stephanie, I was just, what you just read about what you would do for Rivercrest, is the intention to do the same for Chateau Mar?
Yes, I'm offering that, and I'm offering that as a site plan condition that we would do that for those buildings. Yes.
I have some questions, Jackie.
Okay, members of the public, your time is up. I apologize. We've brought the public hearing, we've closed it. It's back to the board. Mr. Sheckman, you want to make a comment or question?
Yes, 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 yes. I had some questions for whoever is the appropriate party to answer them. So just for staff, can you just speak briefly about, you know, what measures are taken from like a public review process to ensure that, you know, before a building goes into a spot like this, it won't cause danger of collapse to surrounding buildings, just so that the public can hear that, because I think there's, people express concern about that, and it would be helpful to know.
Good evening. Yes, so the project would go through the standard building development review process, which includes structural reviews, engineering reviews, et cetera. That's part of standard process to meet city and Florida building code.
Okay, and as part of that structural review process, they would understand Okay, and as part of that structural review process, they would understand the conditions of the soils and ensure that before any new project is built of this proposed size, that it would not cause any, you know, any sort of risk to the foundation of surrounding structures?
Yeah, so I'm not speaking as an expert or a building reviewer, but the same standard procedures that would apply to any development activity would apply to this development.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. And then, just as a formality, this tonight, the planning and zoning board is voting to make a determination rather than a recommendation. Is that correct?
No, they're voting on the project to approve it or deny it.
Right, but this is, this is an actual approval or denial, not a recommendation to the commission, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My next question is for the city attorney. Sherry, can you please, you know, we're not seeing like a request for any type of variance from the code, so it seems like the, you know, the planning and zoning board tonight is tasked with, you know, determining essentially if compatibility is being met, and we have heard from different people, you know, with respect to how they think compatibility is determined, but I'd like to understand from the city attorney's perspective, you know, what exactly constitutes compatibility?
The compatibility section, it's pretty long, but it's in 4725.3 of the code, and it has a bunch of different criteria versus adequacy requirements, smoke, odor emissions, design and performance standards, control of appearance. It's a bunch of different criteria that has to be met. So according to the staff report, this criteria seems to have been met.
Okay, but with respect to height, or you know, determining compatibility with respect to height of a building relative to the buildings adjacent to it, for example, is there any legal, like, element that needs to be considered with respect to our determination if it meets that requirement?
It has some criteria regarding height here on, it talks about that in the master, downtown master plan as well, and it talked about 2.5 over the adjacent height, the adjacent building, and it talks about overall height as well. So it says, buildings should be encouraged to vary in overall height and not be continued in a single volume of continuous height, so it has a, there's a lot written in there. So I can't summarize it, but it's there.
Okay, and this, this proposed height meets that requirement? Sherry?
You would make that determination, but according to the staff report and the criteria that's before you, it appears to have met this criteria.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jay?
No, I think, I think that's it. I was wondering what type of trees they have proposed along the right-of-way. You know, that, that street, as Coleman pointed out, has, on the south side, just, there isn't much of shade, so, you know, I just didn't know if there was a plan to, as projects, as new properties are developed, to try to institute like a shade pedestrian experience, and whether or not this was like an oaks or like a Balnesea, does anyone happen to know?
It's a combination, it's a combination of palm trees and a couple of oak trees.
Okay, that was my last question, thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Stephanie, Ellen had made mention of the fact that there was, there might be a shortfall in the cost of construction on that seawall. I mean, I even had the benefit of looking at the letter that, you know, that seemed like maybe there was a cap on, on cost. What would happen if there was an overrun?
The original letter, we offered to, at their request, we offered to build their seawall, and then we said if there were any cost overruns, that we would bear the cost 80% and they would bear the cost 20%. We, they negotiated and asked us to take that out, but add in a dock, so do a seawall and a dock. So that's how we landed at the seawall and the dock, but I would be willing to, my client would be willing to, to just, whatever the cost of the seawall and the dock is, remove the cap this evening and offer that as a voluntary condition.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mary?
Just to clarify what the city attorney said, it's the decision of the board as to whether this meets neighborhood compatibility as well, is that correct?
That's correct. The staff report is a resource for you, and then you have the testimony that you've heard tonight, so it's looking at all the facts that you've heard tonight as well as the staff report, but it's ultimately your decision, subject to a commission call-up as well.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
If there aren't, I'd like to see if Ms. Toothachee has an answer to my question. And the reason I dwell on this, Stephanie, is because in your presentation, you showed 30-foot separation between the building to the east and the tower, and 42-feet separation between your building and the building to the west, and just that five feet would almost visually put it in between the two buildings. And I think that that would maybe provide some relief.
Unfortunately, the reason there's five feet on the other side is because that's where the utility easement is. So we can't shift on top of the utility easement because that's not permitted. We did look at whether or not we could, we did take pieces out of the building adjacent to Rivercrest, because that's the building that sits on an angle, and so it's got that one small piece of its building that's closest to us. We did look at taking pieces out of our building, which we did at the ground level where we could, but at the higher levels, we cannot, because there's not, you can't, the parking doesn't work. You have to have the drive aisles and the parking, so, I mean, we had actually been asked that, and we had spent some time studying that to see if there was any way to do it. And from an engineering standpoint, because of the garage, because it does meet the parking requirement, we would not be able to do it, unfortunately.
Vacating the easement's not an option?
We'd have to put it back somewhere. We'd, we'd have to...
Put it on, put it on the east side.
I don't think, I don't think it's that easy. I don't...
It wasn't supposed to be easy.
I know. I wish, I wish it was. Believe me, I wish it was, and I wish, when we had been asked, in fairness to Rivercrest, Rivercrest Board, they asked us if we could look at it, and we did. We spent some time looking at, is there any way we can shift this? And it, you just cannot make the parking garage work from an engineering standpoint. It just cannot be done. We tried. That's why we did, though, we did shave the corner off the building that was closest to Rivercrest. That came from, not only from Rivercrest, Rivercrest asked us, and then some of you board members asked us to please look at that, and we did, and we spent pretty much most of today studying if we could do that to improve those western views out of their kitchen windows. So we did, we really did the best we could, but still complying with the engineering standards of the parking garage.
Is there any interest to go back to the neighbors and have further conversation? I mean, one of my questions was about the downtown master plan, if you get denied and not called up by the city commission.
We, we did speak to the neighbors, and they presented us with that hand-drawn plan on a napkin after two years of studying, studying what we could do, and we really did, we really did design to code, to what the code said we could do, and we very carefully, we actually started, as you know, we started with a hotel, we were going to do a rooftop bar, we brought it down, we changed it to all residential, because that was the direction we were asked to go, and then we skinnied it up as much as we could, we shaved as much as we could. We really, really did make an effort to come completely within the zoning that was in place at the time that we applied. Having spoken to some of these neighbors, I don't think they're going to be happy with something unless we come down to like eight stories.
So you're ready to accept your fate tonight on vote?
I think I am, yes.
I just wanted, are we getting to the point where we can discuss as a board?
Yeah, it's back to the board.
Okay. So I have a concern with the neighborhood compatibility, and as you walk this street or drive this street, you know, this is right on, it's right on the edge of that transition zone, and as so many speakers have pointed out, you have a five-story building, which is going to be right smack up against the parking garage, and then you have a, you know, you have a home, and then you go into a bunch of homes, and that's the character of that street. And that, that could change someday, I guess, but the zoning for the rest of that hasn't changed. I don't see that that's where that street is headed. That street is a residential street for most of its, for most of the street, and I just, I personally think, you've done so much, but I think that setback is a huge problem. It's like squeezed in between these two, which is not what the rest of the street is like. So I, I just, I just really have a problem with that compatibility issue, and like Mike, I was wondering if there was a way they could go back and try to resolve some of these issues, either the setback issue to some extent, or at least making sure that the neighbors all have access to whatever their agreement is before, you know, we're put in a position of having to decide something that a lot of people feel they never got a chance to see. And, and so I don't know, I guess there's no, no room there to work on that, is what I'm taking, so I just want to, I just want to say I have a real problem with the compatibility issue. I feel like that street, as you walk it or drive it, has a certain feel and a certain look, and, and I don't see how this building is compatible with that. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board, John?
Sure. And I'll pick up where Mary left off, and a couple of the board members and some of the folks who came up here and spoke made a couple of great points about height, so I'm going to kind of steal their thunder and kind of take it as my own, right? Take credit. So as far as compatibility, when I look at the compatibility and they talk about height, setbacks are met, so that's not really an issue in our code now or in the code that they applied under. So the setbacks, to me, yeah, it'd be nice if they gave more deference to the building to the east, but, you know, Chateau Mar in the future may redevelop, and now we're on their property line, so it, it's kind of like, you got to choose one side or the other, and we have that easement there, so when you're looking at the compatibility of height, we did have a transition zone. The zone directly to the west of us allows 300 feet, so if you really wanted to be a greedy New York developer, you could have made half of your building 300 feet tall and the other half 137 feet tall, and transition it within your property. So by keeping the entire building at 137, I think they definitely meet the letter of the code. The other part to me that, and I think Brad brought it up, and he didn't really strike this point through, but the height of the existing building is two stories, 20 feet, am I correct? Is that right? And Chateau Mar is seven stories, so that's 70 feet, so they're almost four times taller than the existing building. And now we're proposing a building that's going to be about two times taller than Chateau Mar. Well, Chateau Mar is guilty of being four times taller, and now they're complaining that, you know, we've got a building two times taller than us. Well, you know, they're not the big boy on the block anymore, and if we did do an eight-story building or a seven-story building, we'd still block the same view. And I think that was brought up by Mr. Adachi, where he said, yeah, if we, if we did a smaller building on a property there, it would still block the view. So the height of the building isn't a concern. We've addressed that in the code. I think the developers done the best job they could. I mean, I'd made comments to them in my pre-review when I met with them and said, hey, you know, you are kind of close to this existing building. I know you don't have to, but could you shave this corner off and maybe obstruct their views less? And they did that, which is surprising, because I didn't ask them to, I just suggested it as a backup plan, and they actually brought it in the presentation. So I, I don't know how we could, as a board, deny them when they're following the letter of the law, so that's my two cents.
Thanks, John. Any other comments from the board members?
Jackie?
Hi, Brad.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Nice to see you.
You too, you as well. John stole my thunder. Sorry, Brad. I was, I was making the point, and I think that what was most poignant about a lot of the things that were said tonight was, and that's my son who keeps popping in, one of the most poignant things that was said tonight was, I believe someone said they lived here long enough that they remember when one of those buildings was the tallest building over there. At one point, there was someone who built a building that was the tallest, and that was my point. It, when I was, when I was directing my questions towards that one resident who said it was, you know, too tall, it's a cruise ship, et cetera, et cetera, at one point, that building that he lived in was too tall, or someone felt that it was too tall. And right now, I don't think the two-story building that's existing on the property is, really meets the criteria of the neighborhood, because it's next door to a seven building, next door to a seven-story building, next door to a five-story building, and that five-story building is not set in a way that is, you know, I think that's a cool building, because it's set on like a, I guess a catty corner, you could call it. But at some point, everyone was angry at something going up. Maybe someone was angry that that building was catty quartered. Maybe somebody was angry that the seven-story building was this tallest building over there. Maybe the people who lived in the two-story building were like, this, this building next door is massive, and it probably shades us out, you know, 80% of the day during a certain time of the year. What we need to look at is the code, and is it to the code? And we can't consider, although I'd love to, but it's not part of the legal basis, is to consider individuals, you know, views that they're losing. Thank you, my son's handing me a juice box. The, the views that they lose, or the, you know, what they feel is going to be that they're losing money in their condominiums. I think it meets the letter of the, of the code. I don't believe that it is so massive that it's going to change everything. I think next door, another question that I had was, if next door was looking to modify their zoning, because I'm sure everyone else on that street is going to, and if it's sad or not, it's just the way development goes, is that sometimes after 50, 60 years of use, buildings tend to phase themselves out. Now, I'm not saying that for historic buildings, or ones that are designated historic, but ones that were built in the 50s and the 60s that have extended their use on that street, and I believe this is one of them. You know, it's a bunch of transitory apartments that are mainly, I think Airbnb'd out or rented out on, on a basis, a yearly basis during season, and I think this is a, this is a project that meets the code. So I don't see how you can say that it doesn't meet the criteria of the neighborhood, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Sherry, did you want to speak? Sherry McCartney?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll be brief, because somehow John and Brad have read my notes. And I come to the conclusion that the developer is within rights. The setback fits the current code, the height, we look to the rack, and frankly, if this is incompatible, so is the existing situation with the lower building and the two towering beside it. I think that in terms of compatibility, this meets the mark, and as a matter of right under the law.
Thank you. Any other board members want to make comments?
I just, I just want to say that I feel like we're looking at one piece of property in isolation. I've had a lot of people speak tonight about how long they've lived in one of the buildings, in the building particularly to the east, and right next, and when you leave that building to the east at five stories, you're now into single-family homes for the rest of the street. And I just, and these people, and the people that spoke, many of them, the majority that spoke, they talked about their families and how long they've lived in these buildings... they've lived in these buildings, many of them for decades, and they have come to accept the character of the neighborhood. So, I feel like we're deciding compatibility based on one building. One building that's on a lot that through our, through the downtown whatever, has now, you know, we're now going to say, well, it doesn't have to meet compatibility of anything around it. It just has to meet the compatibility on this one lot. And, and I, my fear is what that's going to mean, or that neighborhood as a whole, as we progress. So, with that, I, I'm not going to say anything else. I don't think it meets, if you look at the neighborhood, I don't believe it meets neighborhood compatibility. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think that we have to look at this one building. We're here tonight to discuss this particular project. I think it's a very difficult decision. And I think, you know, Coleman Pruitt made a very good point about this board approved the changes to the code, the transition zone, I guess it was, a year or so ago. And now we're living with that. And it's difficult when a developer comes in and meets the criteria, and we've supported the change, and now we're, you know, maybe some are having second thoughts, but we are where we are. Those are my comments. If there's no other comments from the board, I'd like to entertain a motion. If someone will make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Brad Cohen has made a motion to approve. Brad, in that motion, are you going to include?
Does your motion include the staff condition?
That's what I was going to say.
It does. I'm sorry. Yes, it includes the staff report.
And are you adopting the findings of fact in the staff report?
I am.
Can I add something, Shari? Also, in that motion to approve, I'd also like to include the developer offerings of the dock and the seawall for, that would have to be reviewed by staff, but that has to be part of it, too. Am I correct, Shari?
That was outside of it, but if the board is making a finding that there is a nexus between this development and the seawall, then that can be added. Is the board making that finding to avoid an exaction?
So, Brad, do you find that?
Yeah. I would, I would adopt that, as well as, I'm glad that Jackie spoke, because I'd also want to adopt the, there was a issue about a seismograph and the inspection of the properties before and after. I would like to, to make sure that's part of the record.
That's both properties to the east and to the west.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by John Bronco. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Okay, with none, please call the roll. Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
No.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Weymouth?
Yes.
And Chair Scott?
Yes.
So, pass seven to two. Motion carries. Thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you to the board very much for the healthy discussion and the support. Thank you.
Can, can we, as a board, please take a five-minute recess? Sherry?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So, um, before we broke for this, uh, quick break, we, we need to do a little clerical air here with, uh, the city attorney needs to read, um, the resolution into the record for the previous, um, what we just voted on.
Yes, the first item is a resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida approving a site plan level three development permit for a new residential building with seventy-seven units abutting in the New River and located at eight oh eight Southeast Fourth Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and the Downtown Regional Activity Center East Mixed-Use Zoning District, case number R one nine zero five two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I just make one quick request?
You can make any request. Take your time. You have three minutes.
Thank you. The board members that are online, um, if they could please just, uh, put their camera on when they're voting, just so, uh, everyone can see.
Okay. You guys heard that?
Thank you.
Sherry.
Yes.
Plus, we want to see your face.
Yes. Yes.
You can leave it off except when you're voting, but.
I was just voting, yes.
Nice, and we'd feel like you're really here. Anyway, okay, so we're going to bring the meeting back to order and, let me put my glasses on. Get back to my agenda. Okay, uh, we're going to go ahead and bring the me, bring the meeting back here to case number two, uh, U D P S two one oh two four. Is the applicant, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
I think that was.
Disclosures?
Disclosures, correct.
Jackie?
Yes.
I think that was U D P Z two, not S two.
Mine says S.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one, sorry.
No problem, John. See how much I respect you, anything you say, I agree. Um, not exactly. Um, are there disclosures on this item, please?
Are you going to call us out by name or?
Starting with Mr. Wayman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, spoke, uh, spoke to the applicant's counsel and I did a site visit.
Okay, Mr. Rotella?
Spoke with applicant's counsel and did a site visit.
Okay, Mr. Bronco?
I spoke to Mr. Lockery and I did do a site visit.
Mary Fertig?
I spoke with Mr. Lockery and I visited the site.
Okay, Jay Scheckman?
I spoke with Mr. Lockery and I visited the site.
Okay, Sherry McCartney?
I have none.
Uh, Brad?
I spoke with Mr. Lockery.
Okay, and, Mr. Gannon?
Spoke with Mr. Lockery.
Okay, I spoke to the applicant and I spoke to Mr. Lockery. So, Mr. Lockery, how much time do you need?
Um, Chair Robert Lockery on behalf of the applicant, not more than, probably about eight minutes.
Okay.
Probably not even that much.
Very good. Please begin.
All right, good evening. Uh, my name is Robert Lockery for the applicant. I'm joined tonight by the owner developer of the site, Charlie Ladd. As your staff report indicates, the property is located at twelve oh one East Los Olas Boulevard, which is shown hopefully on your screens here. Can you all see it? Switch it over. I've got it on my screen, but it may be nine minutes now, I'm just.
That's okay, I'm going to give you ten.
I'll go quick.
On good behavior.
Sure.
What'd you say? Exactly.
Thank you, thank you. I should know how to do that, do it all day, long these days. Um, as I indicated, the property is located at twelve oh one East Los Olas Boulevard, which is at the northeast corner of the intersection of East Los Olas Boulevard and Southeast Twelfth Avenue. This view is actually a previous picture taken from Google Earth a couple of years ago, it hasn't been updated yet, and what you see is a retail store that is off of Los Olas pushed to the north with surface parking in the front. Um, about two years ago, um, the owner developer developed the site with a new, about seventy-five-hundred square foot, um, building, uh, commercial building located at that corner. Um, among the improvements to the site were very wide sidewalks that were added, about sixteen feet along Los Olas, in excess of twenty feet along twelfth, um, along Twelfth Avenue, new landscaping in the form of, um, almost fully mature oak trees, new lighting, et cetera, along the front of that. Um, the request before you tonight is to, um, allow for a new restaurant use to go into a portion of that building, and the restaurant is Planta. Um, this is a view of Planta's, um, location in Miami Beach. They have three locations currently in Florida, one in Miami Beach, one in Coconut Grove, and one in downtown, uh, West Palm. This is the interior of the Coke, of the Coconut Grove location. As you can see, a very modern, yet clean, elegant, um, appeal. Um, Planta, as the name may indicate, is a, uh, plant-based restaurant. Um, in fact, it's a hundred, all the menu is a hundred percent plant-based, um, something that we really haven't had as a sit-down upscale restaurant in Fort Lauderdale of a vegan vegetarian variety since Sublime on North Federal closed a number of years ago. Um, so this is bringing that back to Fort Lauderdale, right here on Los Olas, and would be the fourth location, um, for them in Florida. Um, as part of this request, we are requesting a parking reduction. Um, one of the items that your staff requires when we do request a parking reduction is for a parking study that's conducted by a parking consultant, in this case, a traffic consultant, of parking that's available, publicly accessible parking that's available to serve this use, um, within seven hundred feet. That report was conducted, um, obviously other elements were added to it to take for future growth, and the result of it was that even with this restaurant and the location, within seven hundred feet, there's over six hundred, well, there are now six hundred and thirty-six publicly available spaces within seven hundred feet of the proposed restaurant, and even at the peak hour, which no surprise, is a Saturday at, in the PM hour, so Saturday evening, um, only about sixty percent of the available parking spaces are currently used. So it shows there is adequate parking, um, for this restaurant at this location. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, um, or any concerns the board may have.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
I have a request.
Yes, go ahead, John.
I'm very hungry, could you take that picture of food off the screen, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, does the board have any questions for staff, or do you want to make the staff report part of the record?
I move that we make the staff report part of the record.
Okay, we're going to make you second, Jay. Mike's first. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, does the board have any questions for staff? No. Are there any, um, are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, no members of the public?
We do not have anyone signed up online to speak on this item either.
Thank you very much. I think I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Um, one thing I'll, I'll say is that, um, from a public outreach standpoint, being that I'm also president of my homeowners association in Coley Hammock, which is where this project is, um, we had a virtual meeting probably about a month ago, and then I asked them to please repeat it again this week to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to speak, and, uh, we sent it out to the whole HOA and three people showed up, and everyone that showed up was extremely positive. It was a gigantic amount, three people, but anyway, no, nobody opposed. So they did good on the public outreach. Okay, um, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I, I'll, I'll chime in, Mary, um, Jackie.
Please.
I think, um, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I think that this project is just development done right. Um, they created a really amazing walkable experience along Los Olas. The building is really well-oriented along the street. Um, there's definitely adequate parking, uh, within the immediate vicinity. Um, I, the project itself, I like how they incorporated shade trees for a nice shit, you know, shade, uh, shaded experience, um, and, and to be bringing luxury, you know, high-end Miami-style dining to Fort Lauderdale, there's, I, I see only positive things, and, for that reason, I move that we approve the request because it meets the criteria.
Okay, does that include staff recommendations?
Along with staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
Mary seconds it. Sherry, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, yes, I just wanted to clarify, it's the staff conditions of approval in the staff report, is that included in your motion, Jay?
That is also.
Okay. Um, may I read the resolution title?
Um, yeah, is there any, you want to read the resol, yeah, go ahead.
A resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida approving a parking reduction for an existing business located at twelve oh one East Los Olas Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the Boulevard Business Zoning District, case number U D P S two one zero two four.
Okay, I think we're ready to call the roll, Jay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, sorry, yes, can you see me?
Yes, Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Waymoth?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
And Chair Scott?
Yes. Motion has been answered.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Okay, let's move on to case number three. That will be U D P dash Z two one zero zero one, rezoning from residential single-family to low-medium density district. Is the, are there any, um, are there any disclosures from the board?
Mike Waymoth, none.
Uh, Mr. Rotella?
Spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Mary?
I too spoke with the applicant's attorney, or did you say, I thought you said Sherry, sorry, Mary.
Go ahead, you're fine, Sherry.
Because I spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Thank you. Jay?
Applicant's attorney, site visit.
Brad?
None.
Mary? I visited the site and I received, uh, several emails. I'm, do we need to put those in the record, or are we good saying we've received several emails and opposition?
That's enough, Mary.
Pardon?
That's enough to see, say that you've received several emails.
Mr. Gannon?
I too received some emails, thank you.
I received several emails.
Okay, and I received several emails and I spoke to a person that I don't remember their name. Um, I think it was the applicant or the owner. Anyway, sorry about that. Anyway, okay.
Jackie?
Yes.
I did speak to the applicant, the developer.
Great, maybe that's who I spoke to. This was a meeting where we got a lot of people calling us, talking about a lot of things. Okay, um, are you ready to begin, sir?
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome, fifteen minutes of work, right?
Yes, so actually, um, I'd like to request that both rezonings, items number three and four, be heard together because it's two rezonings on one site, if that's all right with you, Board Chair.
Okay. The board wish to put them together?
I move with that we hear them together, yeah.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you. Um, can the presentation be seen on the, uh, screen? Not sure if it can.
No.
Not yet.
Not yet. All right, so we'll just wait a second.
Yeah, sir, what is your name, please?
Yes, Jeremy Shear from Becker &amp; Pollykoff, representing the applicant.
Great, thank you.
Yes, exactly. Awesome, thank you so much. Okay, so, um, this is an application for rezoning to support ten, twelve townhouse units at thirty-three oh three Southwest Fifteenth Avenue, and here you can see obviously a pretty rendering of the proposed project. Um, so just a little bit about the applicant, um, Austin and Tricia Bernstein, they are a married couple living in Coral Ridge, uh, they moved down here and chose to make their livelihood and their home here in Fort Lauderdale. Uh, Tricia is a real estate agent, and as a family, they build and develop, um, uh, real estate. So Tricia, if you want to come up and just introduce yourself very briefly.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tricia Bernstein. Um, my husband and I are the developers, we're a family-owned business, and this is our largest investment we've ever done so far, and we've put our heart and soul into it, and we look forward to hearing feedback, and thank you all for your time, we'll try to be shorter than the first one tonight.
It's easy.
So I just wanted to show you some of the projects that my client has already done in Fort Lauderdale. You know, they generally tend to buy, you know, the worst properties on the block and then transform them. So here you can see a project in Tarpon River, as well as a project in Edgewood. Um, this is the before and this is the after. You know, a picture's worth a thousand words. And wanted to continue here, on one of these projects, the Bell Harbor one, the, the roof had collapsed, and then in Victoria Park, there was major mold infestation and squatters. And then here you can see the end result. Moving on, last slide on this, uh, just some more, um, pictures of, of two more projects they've done in the city of Fort Lauderdale in the past four years. So their goal and mission is to build housing that is purposely built for young families that have luxury features that they can afford. Fort Lauderdale is running out of family housing due to an imbalance in the city's housing stock, and we feel that this project is going to go a little bit, you know, um, part of that way to, to correct that imbalance. Uh, two percent of the city's land is vacant, and almost all of it is owned for industrial, institution, or commercial land uses. Um, this was a very interesting data point, in two thousand seventeen, out of twenty-nine-hundred-and-fifty-four residential units that had been proposed, almost ninety percent of them were proposed in bigs, big box, uh, developments, twenty or more units. Less than three hundred and eighty units of single-family and attached home units were added in that five-year period. Um, as you see, you know, Fort Lauderdale has grown by ten percent over the last ten years, adding almost seventeen thousand residents, so the demand is there. Now about this project, uh, thirty-three oh three Southwest Fifteenth Avenue is in the southern part of the Edgewood neighborhood, and the proposal, the site plan, would be for twelve townhouse units, and based on neighborhood feedback, um, it initially started with sixteen units, then we went down to fourteen, and actually now we're down to twelve. They're all going to be three-bedroom, two baths, at approximately sixteen hundred to nineteen hundred square feet. Another major change, based on neighborhood feedback, is initially they were going to be townhouse style for rent, and now they're all going to be for sale. And here is the site, this is what they purchased, and this was actually so neglected and with so much mold infestation that the code enforcement officer from the city refused to go inside. That's how bad it was. And moving on here, this is the site before they purchased it. Um, it was essentially a scrapyard with debris, oil tanks, tires, there were six broken boats, bobcats, five trailers, three cars, and countless motorcycles. Obviously a danger to the neighborhood, especially to the neighborhood kids. So a little bit about the neighborhood in the parcel. This green right here is the parcel, and encircled here is South Edgewood, just north of five ninety-five, east of ninety-five. A little bit about the housing stock in South Edgewood, approximately eighty percent of the parcels are, uh, used as townhouses, duplexes, and multifamily. So we're, we're definitely within the character of the neighborhood. And here are some of the objectives of the comprehensive plan that we feel we meet, including one point two-two, to encourage high-quality development, and objective seven-point-one of the housing element, which is to bring about housing design and development alternatives that are aesthetically pleasing, which as you saw before, it is definitely very aesthetically pleasing, encourage energy efficiency, and encourage the overall health, safety, and general welfare of city residents, which, uh, as I mentioned before, I mean, they, they cleaned it up, it was, it was very dangerous before. Um, so this is from the staff report. Um, the property has split zoning, but the western three-quarters is currently zoned RS eight and is not compatible with the future land use designation of medium-high. The proposed zoning of RML twenty-five is more consistent with the property's underlying future land use designation of medium-high, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a second. Um, so this slide is very interesting. This is the future land use going back initially to nineteen eighty-nine, and as you can see here, in eighty-nine, um, the three-quarters of the parcel to the west had a future land use designation of medium-high twenty-five, that's twenty-five, uh, units per acre. Two thousand six, still stayed, stayed the same, and then here it is today, still with a future land use of medium-high twenty-five. Um, so, but what's interesting is that this western three-quarters of the parcel has the medium-high future land use, but it's zoned RS eight, and it abuts RML twenty-five, RM fifteen, and RD fifteen, so we thought, you know, maybe there was a Scrivener's error or an omission or something like that, and we're just, you know, uh, we want to correct that so that the zoning matches the future land use. And here you can see, same thing, this western, uh, three-quarters of the parcel in brown has the medium-high future land use, but for some reason it was zoned RS eight, whereas the eastern one-quarter has the medium future land use, and then, uh, zoning of RD fifteen, which we're proposing to rezone it to RM fifteen, exact same density. And here you can see a little bit closer, um, we're updating the zoning of the parcel to be more consistent with its future land use, as I mentioned, uh, rezone the west portion to RML twenty-five, that has a medium-high twenty-five future land use, and then rezone the eastern portion to RM fifteen. And like I said, we have reduced, um, in the site plan initially with sixteen townhouse style units, we went down to fourteen, and now we're down to twelve townhouses, um, so that the actual density proposed for the project is approximately seventeen units per acre. And here you can see another rendering, um, with private entrances, all three-twos, private Tugard garages, and they're going to have gated backyards for dogs, cats, and children to play. Now, what have they done, what have, uh, my clients, Austin and Tricia, done, uh, to make the community a priority? They've become active members of the Edgewood Civic Association, they held a public participation meeting with over twenty-four attendees, and they literally went door to door, knocking on all the neighbors' doors with renderings and site plans to get feedback from those who couldn't, couldn't attend. And actually, they, yesterday, they already scheduled a follow-up public participation meeting, um, to discuss amongst other things, um, you know, the site plan and construction and things of that nature. So they continue to reach out to the neighbors, and they want their feedback, and it's very important to them. So this graphic, I thought, uh, is very telling. All of the purple parcels are neighbors who have written letters of support, including the church to the south, the multifamily townhouses to the west, and, um, many other parcels in the neighborhood. So this is twenty-five neighbors, uh, letters of support on a twelve-unit townhouse project. So what are some of the changes they've made from feedback? They've cut the individual building length down to eighty-five feet from the allowable two-hundred feet, um, they've removed four units, now playing on twelve units, um, they've increased the number of trees by thirty percent, they're all going to be mature trees at planting, um, they have included fifty percent more guest parking than the city requires, uh, may not be pertinent to this hearing, but flooding is a big problem on the site, and, um, their retention plan will hold two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand gallons of storm water, um, installing three-hundred-and-twenty-two feet of new sidewalk, so, so by the way, as far as the flooding goes, it will improve the flooding problem dramatically. And they're not applying for any variances, um, you know, their height is at thirty-one feet and the maximum allowed is thirty-five feet. Uh, here's some more of the solutions that they've, uh, they've made, including, uh, there's a problem with speeding in the community, and they've offered to install speed bumps, and interestingly enough, there's about twenty-five mango trees that produce seventy-five-thousand mangoes, and you'd think that would be great, you can come on site and eat as many mangoes as you want, but actually they, they rot because seventy-five-thousand mangoes is a lot of mangoes, and it's actually created a neighborhood raccoon problem.
Did you count those mangoes, just for the record?
What's that?
Did you count those mangoes?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, e- every day, every day. Uh, and the raccoons as well. Uh, so thank you so much for taking the time to learn about the projects, and we're happy to answer any questions and discuss with the board, and I'd like to reserve, uh, I guess my five minutes, uh, for rebuttal. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Does the board have any questions for the applicant's attorney?
I do. I don't, I don't understand, um, the, the part where you say the building length was reduced from two-hundred to eighty-five feet. You're saying that the parcel was two-hundred feet long and you're, there's a lot of open space now that's not built on, or?
Right, great question. So initially it was, um, a one-longer building, and now it's been split up, and the two-hundred feet refers to the maximum allowable length for one building. Yeah.
I see, so that you split them, okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any questions for the applicant's attorney?
I have a question.
Bill, go ahead.
Um, on the material that we were given, and maybe it was in one of these slides, where you're talking about developers make the flood problems worse, and you're talking about massive stormwater storage area, you talk about retaining two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand gallons of water onsite behind, and behind, to be held inside a decorative retaining wall. Can you explain that to me? I'm just.
Well, just to clarify, I'm not a civil engineer, but my understanding is that the, the backyards will, um, have retention for, uh, the stormwater, as well as the, the wall itself, um, will be able to support it, but, you know, I do want to clarify, I'm not a civil engineer, so I don't know the exact answer.
Okay, I didn't know if it was underground, but, you know, just the thought of that much water being held be, behind a retaining wall just was something that I couldn't quite get my arms around.
Right, right, and, and right now, you know, the water's currently running off the property, um, there's nothing to retain. to retain it, so it's going to be a dramatic improvement for the current situation.
Yeah, Bill. I've run into that a few times, where you're trying to retain as much water as possible, and if you have enough land, you can berm up and then swell down, but sometimes you've got to swell all the way to the property line, and then you have a little tiny wall at the edge. So like along 17th Street, some of the commercial properties there, they had to build a little wall by the sidewalk with a rail. So that's the way they do that. It's just, it's usually a small retaining wall, maybe 18 inches, 20 inches. So that's...
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, Jackie.
Go ahead.
Jeremy, did you mention if you had any support from the neighborhood?
Yes, thank you so much for that question. We do have support from the Civic Association. I believe she's online, the president, virtually.
Thank you.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
If there's no further questions from the board for the applicant, does the board wish to make the staff report part of the record? If so, if someone will make a motion.
I make a motion that the staff report become part of the record.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I think we'll go ahead now and open this to the public hearing, for the public that would like to speak. If you're coming up, please confirm that you've been sworn in. Did you get here earlier and get sworn in? Okay, great. If you come up to the podium, you'll have three minutes. And please, hold on a second, please state your name and where you live.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nancy Zamora. I own two properties that is going to be facing this possibility of this building. The, I know the neighbors, I've been living for years in the area. My mother also owns another property where they want to build this big building. The Johnsons used to live there. It was not an abandoned property. They were people that they had middles, but they kept their area very safe and nice. They really cut the grass and all the bushes, and it was safe. Nobody could get in there for 40 years. We are in a very, very bad flood zone. When it's raining, the rain comes all to my driveway. And my mother's driveway, and my lot that is empty, is a single-family residency. It gets awful, it looks like, oh, I have a lake right there. The, I don't think the city does a spot zoning. See, they want, because one little parcel is multifamily, they want everything to be multifamily, but actually, those lots are single-family, and we expect single-family. We don't want to see a three-story building in the front face of us, and then we are having trouble getting out of our house, because there are going to be a lot of cars coming in and out. Also, 32nd Place is a street that is not a big street, it's not wide, and people walk to the park. We have a passive park in there, and dogs and animals, and this is a wildlife area. We are very close to Snyder Park. We have raccoons, we have possums, we have foxes, we have a lot of mango trees. We've enjoyed those mango trees for 40 years, not only us, the whole neighborhood. There is no three-story building in the neighborhood. There is townhouses that they build, but they're enclosed, this is a private community. The applicant wants to build a big, big building in front of us with no privacy at all. They're coming in and out of the same 32nd Place, and it's dangerous. I've been asking people to slow down, and people have been coming out of their cars and facing me angrily because I'm asking them to slow down. Safety is the issue. Flooding is the issue, and that building is not compatible to the area. So I disapprove this rezoning, not because they want to rezone, that the city should do that, because then you are giving a signal to the whole neighborhood that anybody can come and rezone and destroy what the city is, single-family homes. Behind me, all the other areas are single-family homes. Yes, there are other duplexes, but on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Berg, Nancy Zamora's sister. I don't live on 32nd Place, but I visit my mom, which is on 1581 Southwest 32nd Place, almost every day.
Where do you live?
Daily. However, I'm there all the time. So everything that my sister just said is very true. And just like the first case you guys had, which was, you know, a big, big building, we're facing the same thing with this small building that this developer wants to build. And compatibility is a big issue, because those are single-family homes. In that zone area, she wants to build on Southwest 32nd Place, which is residential area, multifamily, which we are, we don't want that to happen. On 15th Avenue, I guess it's zoned for duplex or townhomes, but on 32nd Place, Southwest, it's for single-family homes. And the traffic will be really bad. The density change will cause traffic problems. The value on the properties there is going to go down. At the beginning, she mentioned that there was a meeting with residents, and we all went. And her and her husband said that they were going to be rental properties. Now, she's saying that they're going to be for sale, so, which is true. Is she trying just to sell City of Fort Lauderdale with that, saying that she's doing it for reselling? Because she told us that it was going to be a property management building, and that she was going to be managing it, and it was going to be rentals. So I am questioning her, what's going on here? Instead that later on, she's going to make it as rentals, because that is really a residential family place. So I'm backing up my sister, and I opposed.
Thank you for your comments.
No for rezoning.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Kim Woodland, and I live at 3232 Southwest 16th Terrace. I guess I want to start off with saying, when she first approached us, I was really excited about the project, because it looked like it was going to be a really attractive project coming to the community. There are some pros about the project. However, some of the cons that come with it are the fact that it's so many units in that small amount of space. And they're right in saying that the road is pretty small at this point, there's no sidewalk, it's a very small, quiet road, and the way that they're planning on doing it, they originally said they were going to do 14 units with 14 separate driveways that are going to be in and out on that road. If it was more of a contained community, if they can come up with a different plan where they have one main entrance, I think it'd be a lot safer, a lot less traffic, just coming up with something that works for everybody, and also, if there's just a lot less units, I think that if you look at that lot, it went from 14 to 12, but 12 is still a lot. That's pretty much, I guess, all I had to say about it. It's some good about it, they have, they made a meeting, they've listened to some of our concerns, and they are trying to work with the community, but I think the main thing is the number of units. It's going to create a lot of congestion and maybe safety problems for, you know, people that are walking around in the community.
Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Alex Ramirez. I'm a resident at Edgewood Landings, which is the property next west of the parcel in question. For starters, I'm going to mention that I'm for the project. I moved into the area about a year ago. For starters, the mango issue, it is an issue. It borders our property, and if you walk up and down it, it's all rotten mangoes, which obviously attract vermin. We've seen serpents crawl through our backyards. Also, the property, I moved in a year ago, it was not visually pleasing. It honestly looked like a junkyard to begin with, and as the developers starting moving the trash out, I just cannot believe the amount of, like, trash was coming out. Like, my girlfriend and I, as we drive off the neighborhood, we're like, was that all that in there? I mean, there's like rotten boats, just like, they were hoarding. I saw some of the residents mentioning three-story buildings. I, Edgewood is two stories, and it's within, they can see it from the front yard. So I don't think it will be an eyesore at all. I mean, it's just one more story. There are three-story townhomes built all the time, perfectly normal, within limits, in my opinion. Obviously, I'm not a civil engineer, or I don't know the code by heart. Privacy, everyone struggles with that, but just like everyone has neighbors, it's the same thing. I mean, I don't think privacy is violated. They'll be residential properties now. As I mentioned, they listen to the community, they have changed it from rentals to actual, for sale. So there won't be rental properties anymore. It actually shows they listen to the neighbors. Safety, I'll be honest, in my opinion, and have one minute. In my opinion, as far as safety goes, it'll help improve it, in my opinion, by raising the average income family that lives in the area, because let's face it, we do have some rough patches in that neighborhood. And I think it'll raise the median income, so you'll get better families, more educated people in the neighborhood. I don't think safety will be affected at all, especially if they'll be planning to sell them, which would people that would be vetted by the banks and obviously be able to afford those loans. Traffic, they're not building I-95 in front of a front yard. It's just like any other neighborhood. Our community, it's on racist, it's 12 houses, it's too many. My community, Edgewood, is 26 houses. So that's actually a little bit over double the numbers, so I don't think that's even a valid argument. Just to wrap it up, they listen to the community, they have an effort to contact us, and I'm for the project.
Thank you so much for your comments. Please state your name and where you live.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Timothy Jacques. I am the pastor of the church that is right next to the new project, south of the new project. So the developer met with us, and he, and they showed us the renderings of what they would like to build over there, and we look at it, and we see that it's, it looks nice. We don't really have concern with the project. However, we do have issues with water when it rains, and they mentioned that they can help with that, they can do something about that. The way they're going to build, and they're going to retain some of the water, which is going to be helpful to both them and the church. And so I think that can be helpful if they can accomplish that. As far as the driveways, I think that if they can build the driveway on, the driveways on the 32nd Place side, that will be better, the way they're showing it on the rendering. And so I think that's good. Instead of the south of the building, it's, it will be better to be on the, on the front of the building, on the 32nd Place side. And also, they mentioned that they're going to build dumpsters inside the building, so I think that's a good thing, instead of putting them on the back of the building, which is going to create some issues for us with the church. And also, they talked about changing the zoning. They proposed to change the zoning. I think if that can increase the value of the area, I don't see any, any issue with that, as long as it's, it can bring value into the community. So I think that's all we, I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Jacques, from New Life United Methodist Church. I am a member of the church. We did sit with the developers. They showed us the plan. Like some of the previous speaker mentioned, we had an understanding it was going to be for rental instead of for selling. We do know it's a beautiful building, like Pastor mentioned, and concerned that we had was for the safety of the people in the community walking toward the park, but there is the sideways, the sidewalk where they walk, and that's why they're not making the opening on 15. They're making it in the inside to prevent for trafficking while members of the church are going in and out of the church lot. And so all the people are walking, it was going to be too much traffic. So when we talked about it, so that's why they decided not to put it facing 15th Street for safety, but to make it on the other side of the street. So I speak on support of the building.
Thank you very much. Tricia, do we have members of the public virtually?
Yes, we do. Our first person signed up is Juanita Cook.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Juanita, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Juanita Cook, and I live on 32nd Place in the neighborhood. And I actually, I was born in Fort Lauderdale also, and I got to tell you, this is one of the best communities that I have lived in. I feel safe here, very nice community. That property, the actual building was an eyesore, but around it, it's beautiful, old Florida, beautiful trees, and very, very private. Like, I never even saw the building until they started knocking down the trees. I will say, on 32nd Place, the street that I live in, the biggest problem that I have with this proposal is the driveways coming out to 32nd, because we're a dead-end street, and there's a park on this street. So you will see families coming down the street to go to the park to walk, and they come, sometimes they do grow fast, like she said. I don't know how these driveways, these 12 driveways, are going to come out to 32nd Place. We're very residential, and that is really my concern, why I don't want this to go forward and change how it is. I want it single-family, as it has been for years. Thank you.
Thank you. Tricia?
Okay, the next speaker is Nicole Ciovaco. She can unmute herself now.
Hi, good evening. My name's Nicole Ciovaco. I'm the president of Edgewood Civic Association. I've also lived in the neighborhood for probably about 10 years, and I've been on the board, I believe, for five now. The majority board approves the project. It was presented to us several months ago. The Bernseens and I have had multiple communications, multiple back-and-force, them encouraging feedback from not only the board, but the neighbors. When it was presented a few weeks ago at the clubhouse, they were encouraging our they were encouraging our commentary and requests for revisions, plans. They wanted to be good neighbors for us. I will say, when it was presented and gained majority approval, it was posed as a rental community with the owners managing the property. But I suppose based on the feedback that has changed. So to be completely honest, I don't know if the, I feel the board would not change their mind, rental versus property for sale. In my own personal opinion, it doesn't change my opinion whatsoever. I've seen the photos of what was there and I was bewildered by the condition of the property. I have two small children. If they would have ever made their way onto that property, they could have been seriously injured. I think the project is lovely. I think the placement of it with the surrounding area could be a very positive thing and bring a new dynamic to the neighborhood, which is also encouraged. I also look at the size of the lot and I had this conversation with the Bernsteins a few days ago. And I, I don't know what else would be sufficient there with that size of a property. Because I can tell you, the street that I live on in Edgewood, we have large lots. And the few houses that have sold here are now Airbnbs, which in my opinion is far worse than lovely townhomes that encourage younger families potentially into the neighborhood who want to participate and do good things. So that's, of course, my personal opinion. However, after the participation meeting, they definitely got majority board approval for the project. And I also, I know I have an extra few minutes for being part of the association. So I wanted to touch on some of the other comments from the neighbors because that doesn't go unnoticed. Yes, it was, or is, a lovely larger piece of property with overgrown trees. However, I think that it can pose a nuisance. The mangoes, yes, they're lovely to look at. But the maintenance of them, if they're not maintained, can pose a problem. So that was one of the reoccurring opinions of the neighborhood, was the trees. Another is the traffic. And I know firsthand how tremendously difficult it is in a neighborhood to get some of the things offered by the city implemented by way of speed studies, speed humps, speed calming. It is difficult. And I'm not saying it's going to be a problem or not going to be a problem, but it's not as simple as we have some new neighbors. We need to impose new things to, for traffic calming or speed humps or this or that. So I can't speak for if it's going to be a potential problem. However, the parking seems to be more accommodating than any of the other proposed projects in the neighborhood since my time on the board. And I will say that I appreciate the owner's willingness to work with the neighborhood and take commentary and take it all into consideration in modifying the plans and making adjustments. Thank you.
I have a question for you real quick. Are you representing yourself? Are you also representing the association's position?
I had a lot of my own personal opinion, but I am also representing the association. There was several board members that were present at the neighborhood participation. And following the meeting, every single board member that was present was in favor of the project.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other?
Yes, our next speaker is Gabriel Di Tomaso.
Okay, Gabriel, you're up. You there, Gabriel? There you are.
Oh, sorry, I'm not good with the technology. Could you hear me?
Yes, Gabriella, go ahead.
Yes, hi, my name is Gabrielle Di Tomaso. And I am, I live locally here in Fort Lauderdale and I'm a real estate agent. And I just wanted to say that I truly think that this Edgewood has been overlooked by developers and clients for many years. And this development will only definitely help increase property values in all of Edgewood. I am definitely for this project. And it's, in my opinion, is only going to increase value all in the neighborhood.
Gabriel, where do you live? Gabriella, where do you live?
I live in Fort Lauderdale in Imperial Point.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Pamela Romero.
Pamela? There we go, I see Pamela. She has her hand up. Now she's unmuted. Go ahead, Pamela.
Hi there, can you hear me? Hi, how are you today? I'm also an agent and I'm very familiar with Edgewood as well. I do a lot of business in the area. I think it has a lot of potential and that it's been a hidden gem. I'm excited for these townhomes to be built. I think it's a beautiful project. I have clients I know would jump on them in a heartbeat. And I think the price point mentioned of $595 to around $615 is very obtainable for the area. And I also wanted to say that I don't think it, I was listening to the other comments. I don't think it makes a lot of sense to put a single-family home behind the church there. So I'm for the project. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is James Clark.
James? James is muted.
Oh, can you hear me, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you, James, go ahead.
Oh, well, good evening, everyone. My name is James Clark and I live on Southeast 15th Avenue in Pompano Beach. So I'm not in Fort Lauderdale, but I am absolutely Fort Lauderdale adjacent. I just want to thank the board and the city staff for the opportunity to speak briefly. I'm here as a character reference for the applicants, for Tricia and Austin Bernstein. And I've known them for approximately 10 years. And they've worked on a real estate project for me in Boca Raton. Just want to point out, I have no financial interest in this proposal. I'm not getting any payment or benefit for it. I'm just here as a satisfied customer and to such an extent that I, you know, I cherish this opportunity to speak briefly on their behalf. I've listened to this meeting and I've reviewed the presentation. And what I would say about them is, would echo some of the themes that have already come across in the discussion. But I think they're best characterized by three points. The first is that they're local. And as was pointed out, they live in, they're building their family in Fort Lauderdale. They're not impersonal representatives of a large out-of-state developer. They're very easy to work with. And they are accountable. You know, my experience has been that they are onsite, they take responsibility. They constantly seek feedback. They are professional in their communication. They pay high attention to detail. And they have very strong follow-through. And the third is that they're of the highest integrity. They will do what they promise. They will willingly follow all the applicable guidelines and regulations. And, you know, my experience has been that if there was any ambiguity, they'll proactively seek to resolve it. So I just wanted to share those comments as someone who has, you know, experienced their development. And I support their proposal. And I just, I hope it is useful information for the board to consider. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you for speaking. Do we have more members, Trish?
Yes, our next speaker is Mike Betschelder. He's calling in with the last four-digit, 7036.
7036, I see him. He's muted. Unmute, Michael.
Mike, if you could please press star six to unmute, star six to unmute. He's one of my old neighbors.
Okay, you're unmuted, Mike.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening, this is Mike Betschelder. I too am a licensed real estate broker and I'm a lifetime resident of Fort Lauderdale. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
We hear you.
Excuse me?
No, go ahead, Mike.
We hear you.
Okay, I'm a lifetime resident of Fort Lauderdale and I am a real estate broker who does business in that area. My son has gone to football practice at Little Yankee. I've driven through the area my whole life and seeing what was there and what is proposed, I believe it's a phenomenal project and it'll increase value. It'll help out in the neighborhood and will do great things for the area.
Where do you live, Mike?
I live in Pompano at the moment.
Oh, that's right, okay, perfect, that's no problem. Okay, thanks for your comments.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, our next speaker is Sarah Azmy.
Can you hear me?
Sure, go ahead, Sarah.
Hi, I'm Sarah Azmy. I live in the Edgewood Landing community next door. And I would just like to state that I fully support this project. After reading over the proposed plans, developers are ultimately benefiting our community as well as the entire neighborhood. The property that it's on used to look like what I would describe as a junkyard. It was really unappealing and definitely unsafe to neighborhood children. There were snakes that were coming onto our property as well from the mangoes that were rotting. And the developers have definitely taken into account how to benefit the community by listening to the members and offering to help fix the flooding issues by reducing the townhomes from 14 to 12 units, as well as changing them from rental to for sale. I believe that the community is changing for the better and this project should be a part of that change. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for, thank you for your comments. Tricia, another real estate broker? I'm just kidding.
We have another speaker. We have another speaker who had signed up, Kimberly Woodland.
Okay. Kimberly, you're up.
I actually ended up speaking in person, so I've already spoken on the,
Okay, thank you.
On the project, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is all I have signed up.
Okay. Did you want to say something else?
No, if we have anyone else that is wishing to speak, if they would raise their hand virtually. Okay, we have Anna Rysador, who's raised her hand.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate this opportunity. I just want to say that we've heard from a lot of people tonight that do not actually live in Edgewood. I've lived in Edgewood for over 40 years. I attended Edgewood Elementary School. Forty years ago, there was flooding on 29th Street. I taught, I caught tadpoles and froglets. The city has not addressed our flooding issues for 40 years. This project is not going to help the flooding. I would propose that before you vote on this, please have, you know, the guy said he's not a civil, he's not a civil engineer. So can we please get a civil engineer? Because it is not going to help the flooding. I live on 32nd Court, right behind 32nd Place and right in front of 32nd Street. Those two streets drain onto my street. I've been in touch with Ben Doran said, he knows about it. He's promised to fix the drainage issue. And we've got to fix the drainage issue before we can have any more development. It's killing me. My house flooded in 2011, 2017, 2019, October 2020 and November 2020. All of this building and development is creating more flooding. Also, just because people are not educated does not mean, does not equal rezoning. Mango trees do not equal rezoning. So I don't understand why we're saying that, you know, we have all these mangoes, we got to rezone. I see kids in the neighborhood. I teach school at Christendale Elementary School. This is a family neighborhood. All my students live here. They go and they eat the mangoes. I just, it's not, it's not good for the neighborhood. I'm just saying, you know, clean up the property. Just because you have a dirty property doesn't mean rezoning. We can't handle any more development unless, until we handle the flooding. We are a hidden gem. Let's keep it that way, we're single-family. And that's pretty much it, I guess. Civil engineer, you know, please, before you vote, please hire a civil engineer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Tricia?
We do not have anyone else that's signed up. We do have one more person that's raised their hand, Eileen McNamman.
McNamman? Eileen, go ahead. You know, hold on a second. Hold on a minute. Sherry, when these people show up, I mean, do you need to swear them in? Virtually, how does that work?
I can swear them in when they're virtual, yes. If you'd like me to, I can.
I can't hear you.
I can swear them in if you'd like me to.
It's up to you.
Yeah.
Okay, Eileen, you need to be sworn in. Like the other, I guess it's a little late, but. Okay, go ahead.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? This is to Eileen. Hello?
Eileen? I can't hear Eileen. Okay. Okay, we lost Eileen. Are there any other members of the public that want to speak on this issue? That haven't spoken? Okay, let's close the public hearing. I'm sorry, it's closed. Public hearing is closed. Bring it back to the board. Does the board have any questions for?
I do, and maybe staff can answer the question. My first question is, because this might answer a lot of my other questions. Are they, we're only looking at the rezoning. We're not considering the site plan. Does this site plan come back for a Level 2 review?
No. A Level 2 review, yes, DRC, not planning and zoning board.
So a lot of these technical comments that we're getting, I'm going to defer to that review because the subject at hand is, does it meet the zoning or the rezoning requirements? And to the public with regard to that, this will go through a public review through DRC. You will have a chance to comment on the site specifically. So if there are things that you would like to see improved on the site plan that you have seen, you can make those comments through staff at a DRC level review. There's another level of review beyond this. We're just looking at the rezoning. So a lot of the things that were brought up tonight are great concerns. I'm sure a lot of those concerns are going to be addressed through DRC. But what we're here to discuss tonight is, is this a property that should be rezoned because of what other properties are around it? The idea of spot zoning was brought up. I don't believe it's spot zoning. I would ask staff. It seemed to me that everything around this property was compatible and the underlying land use was 100% compatible. It did seem like a Scribner error.
The underlying land use is consistent with the proposed rezonings and I'm not sure if you're taking the application separately. But on each of the cases, it is consistent with what is proposed.
Right, so this wouldn't be considered spot zoning? Because the adjacent properties have similar densities and zonings?
Yes, when we evaluated it, we took the land use under significant consideration. There is actually a pattern of the RML 25 that extends westward. And then as far as the RM, even though it jumps over the RD 15 properties against, again, the underlying land use is very similar. Some of the characteristics of what is permitted in this district are similar in terms of density. The only difference, obviously, once, you know, once the rezoning happens, if it happens, the RS 8 permits a density of eight units to the acre, whereas the RML 25 permits 25 units to the acre. And the RM 15 permits 15 units to the acre, which is the same density as the surrounding RD 15. And that's why we didn't consider that. And that's why we didn't consider that particular RM 15 to be inconsistent or a spot zoning.
Right, because I know we've had examples come before the board where it wasn't recommended because it was spot zoning. But that was the case when it was surrounded by something completely different and they said, hey, we want more density right here in the middle, but this is an edge. And then there was one matter about ownership. And I know this comes up a lot, ownership, is it, you know, owned property or rental? That's not really, you know, in our purview, right? It doesn't really matter in the code, it's not addressed?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Before we, does the applicant's attorney want to speak? You wanted to rebut or have your final few minutes?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to yield my time to any questions that the board has.
Okay, so you're finished then, that's fine?
Yes.
Mary, you want to say something?
Yeah, I do. I, I think these have been two very interesting cases tonight, and a lot of it comes back to the neighborhood. And I don't know how many of you drove that neighborhood, but driving it, you see single-family homes. It's interesting to see what the map shows. But when you actually drive the neighborhood, and there is Edgewood, I guess, back some distance west of it, and there is a Lennar development as you come in. But the bulk of that neighborhood surrounding this is single-family homes. And, you know, we're rezoning this without a site plan to allow 25 acres. They started at 16. What our backup says is 14, and now they're at 12. But there's nothing to prevent that from going to, once we rezone it, there's nothing to prevent it from going to 25. And, and I think that's a concern. I think at some point, this is a very old neighborhood, that people, you know, I mean, you've heard the testimony from the lady that's lived there for 40 years. I also have a concern with the increasing density that's going to occur and what that's going to do to our local schools. She mentioned Croissant Park, I'll mention the middle school, New River Middle, which is one of the most critically overcrowded middle schools in the county. And I think there are a lot of considerations that need to go in here. But primarily, I'm concerned that we're taking a parcel that could have eight units, eight townhouses on it, and we're going to make that potentially 25. And I think that's a pretty big leap, given that everything else around it is single-family homes.
Yeah, it's difficult to do these rezonings. We really can't talk about a site plan because that might totally change once they get...
But Mary, to your point, I mean, it's a half-acre site, so it would be 12 and a half or 12 units. So, they can't come back unless they go even higher density with 25 units, so...
Yeah, I just, I just...
I'll chime in. So, while I appreciate everything that Mary said, I, I believe that, you know, with this project, it's, you would think if you didn't look at the agenda that we were looking at a site plan approval tonight because that, the developer has taken so much time and energy and been transparent about exactly what they plan on doing and that they don't plan on exceeding it. And they've tried to take into consideration, you know, what neighbors and others would, would like to see in the project. I don't know that I personally have seen a rezoning request that was more thoughtfully done and more proactive in terms of community engagement as I have with this one. I know the property that this developer has built on 10th Street and Tarpin River, and I didn't even realize that until they put that rendering up in the beginning. But that is definitely one of the most thoughtfully done properties in the community and completely fits in. I, I mean, I absolutely love this developer's mission. I think they put their money where their mouth is in terms of how much time they're putting into this request, the attention and detail and love in their presentation, the fact that they don't want to max out all 17. Their heart and soul seem to have really kind of poured through this entire presentation. The, the buildings that, and the way that they're orienting them to the street to maintain a neighborhood feel. I mean, I really kind of feel if there's ever a chance to think, you know, what you see is what you get, it sounds like it would be coming from these developers here. Now, all that being said, you know, we're not here in my, you know, our responsibility tonight is to determine if the rezoning itself is, one, consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, which it is, two, whether or not the changes anticipated from the proposed rezoning will not adversely impact the character of development, which I don't think it will. And the character of the area surrounding the parcel proposed to be rezoned is compatible with the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. And to me, that feels pretty clear. So, those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Jay.
Could you clarify, is this .74 of an acre?
Yes, this is, this parcel is approximately .75 acres.
And so, with that, how many, how many townhomes could you put on it, on this piece of property? If we rezone it?
Somewhere either 16 or 17.
Thank you.
Total.
I just wanted to get it on the record.
And how many are you actually proposing to put on there?
Right, so, you know, we started at 16, we went down to 14, and now we're down to 12, which, you know, as you mentioned, is undergoing the DRC process, so...
Would you be willing to put a restrictive covenant on the property to 12 units? And not go for the full 18?
Uh, yeah, I believe we would be. I mean, 12 is what we're, we're planning on, on building. Yeah.
That's good. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? And if there are not, I'll entertain a motion. I think John should make it.
I would make a motion to approve with all the staff findings and recommendations. And also, having the developer file a restrictive covenant with the county to limit the property to 12 units.
What would be the basis of that as it pertains to the criteria for a rezoning?
That was volunteered by the developer.
Right, but that cannot be, an exaction can't be waived. That's in the...
John, I think the character area is, is less impacted.
How do I get that in?
You would have to make a finding that, in accordance with the, one of the criteria that's listed here, that it is somehow related to the request.
Well, the lower density is more compatible with the adjacent properties. So, I feel it's a transition. So, the restrictive covenant of 12 units would make it more compatible with the surrounding area.
That's in the record, thank you.
And we are going to vote separately on these items, is that correct, Shari?
Yes, so that first motion would be applying to item number four, and then you'll do another one for item number five.
Are you sure that's not three and four? It's three and four, Shari.
Okay, go ahead, three.
No problem. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, is there a second to Mr. Bronco's motion?
I'd second his motion.
Go over, tell a second's a motion. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, Jamie, please call the roll. This is for item number three. Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Waylon?
Yes.
Chair Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, case, the next item. I'll entertain a motion on the next item, please.
Just to clarify, that's item number four, right?
Correct, sorry. Mr. Bronco, you seem to be...
Well, since I made the last motion, I would like to make an identical motion that was already read into the record for item number four.
No, you can't, I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Rotella, were you going to second that?
Yes, I'll second that motion.
Just wanted to clarify with your motion, John. Is it 12 townhomes for the overall development?
That's correct, both parcels. Or both, both properties in question here. And maybe I'm describing it incorrectly.
It is two parcels, it's got to be.
Just want to clarify that the motion is for items three and four. If there's an additional one for the restrictive covenant, we're happy to do that too as it's more compatible at 12 units.
No, we just need clarification on what we're, what you're accepting as far as, is it 12 townhomes for the entire development? Three and, item three and four, or...
It's for the entire .75 acres.
Okay.
Allocated per square foot. Right, John?
It's, it's .75 acres. And by my calculations, they can build up to 18 units. Staff can check me. And they are only building 12 units. Could staff confirm this?
I guess, John, I guess the question to answer is, the restrictive covenants would be on the land, is what we're trying to go for, right? And if so, there are the different parcel sizes. So, wouldn't we want to have the 12 units limited, allocated per square foot, depending on each parcel size?
Dewane Spence, Assistant City Attorney. No, it's fine that you have the restricted covenant for the overall parcel. We just wanted to get clarified for the record, since you're voting on these items separately, that the first vote that was approved for the recommendation of approval on item three with the restricted covenant, that you're extending that to be distributed over this current pending motion for item number four. So...
Correct.
It's a vote for one restrictive covenant
For the entire parcel.
For the overall parcel. But just wanted to understand, wanted to clarify for the record that you weren't just subjecting the parcel under three to 12 and then a different 12.
I understand why you guys are asking for that clarification. So, yes, we consider them both together, and the intent was to have 12 units total for the entire development, for the entire parcel being developed, which includes items three and four.
Thanks, John.
Thanks for the clarification and then, Madam Chair, you can move forward.
No, thank you for bringing it up, because that would have been a sweet deal. Just put 12 units on that and sell the other parcel. Okay.
Okay, so we do have a second, Mr. Rotella did, so I think we're, Jamie, we're ready to vote. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Waymoth?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Chair Scott?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, case number, next up is case number UDP T21007.
Do we need to vote if we're going to go past 10 o'clock? Isn't that one of the mayor's things?
I thought it was 10 o'clock.
Well, it's quarter to 10 right now, I don't know how long this item's going to take.
Are we going to get through this in 15 minutes, staff?
It's up to you.
No, it's up to you.
You tell us.
Can we defer it to next month? Or do we have a, or do we know if there's a...
I would love to defer it. I would love to defer it.
Okay.
Is that a motion, Mary?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Is there a second to defer?
I did.
Yeah.
I seconded it.
So, anyone want to speak to the motion?
To defer the item until next month is what Mary moved.
Yeah, it's not, usually it's non-debatable.
Yeah, it's worth discussion, but a lot of folks waited here till now.
I know. A lot of folks are waiting, staff's waiting.
I, I, hopefully it won't take too long. Let's...
Hopefully it won't take too long. I think, I think it's a little more of a...
I think it's a pretty major thing.
I do too.
I mean...
Chair, if I could, and, you know, obviously it's up to the board, but we just have clarifications that the board gave us directly to work on that we're bringing back tonight. It's not, we're not revisiting the entire ordinance. So, Carleen focused her presentation, I believe it's about five to seven slides, on just those things you asked us to revisit based on the public input that we received at the last meeting. Actually, it's four slides, so...
Okay, in all, in all fairness, we have a motion and a second to defer. Can we just vote and then we'll decide if we're moving?
Yeah.
Chair, I would like to add before, we do also have the landscaping ordinance, which is also pretty lengthy, that's date certain for next month. So...
That's going to be a long one.
If you defer both items, you're going to have what you have today, so...
Well, if we don't have anything else, we might...
Okay, so, let's go ahead and see what the, what the board wants to do. Please give me your votes, defer or not defer.
Well, she has to call the vote, doesn't she?
I don't think she has to call that. Do you have to call that?
Yeah.
Okay, Jamie, call the, call the roll if we should defer or hear it tonight, please.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, sorry, this lady was speaking to me. Are you deferring to the next meeting? The next planning and zoning board meeting? The next, next month? Or...
Is your deferral to a time certain next meeting?
Yes, could be, yeah.
Mike, you good with that? Yes. Okay, we're ready for the roll call, Jamie.
Okay.
Mr. Bronco?
No.
Mr. Cohen?
No.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
No.
Ms. McCartney?
No.
Mr. Rotella is absent. Mr. Sheckman?
No.
Mr. Waymoth?
Yes.
Chair Scott?
Yes.
Well, it failed. Okay, let's go, Carleen.
And it looks like Bill's on the phone, no? He's attending virtually.
No, he's got his iPad on.
Oh, there he is.
Okay, one more item I want to clarify. Shari, do we have to do anything if we're going to be talking about this after 10 o'clock?
Yes, you have to do a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion to extend the meeting?
You want to stay until what time?
10:30.
I can't make the motion, so it takes another board member to do that.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:15.
Perfect, that's what I was thinking. Is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded? Who was the second?
I did.
Shari McCartney, okay.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye, okay.
Aye.
Okay, Carleen.
Perfect. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Carleen Grant with Urban Design and Planning. Case number UDP T21007. Our proposed amendments to the Central Beach zoning districts that were originally presented to the board in July of this year, yep, of this year. At the meeting, staff presented amendments to the definition section of the code, tables for uses and proposed dimensional standards, design compatibility point system revisions, open space requirements, standards that address pedestrian realm, revisions to the dimensional requirements, and the revisions to development permits and procedures. At the July 21st meeting, we did get public comment that the board suggested a deferral for, for staff to analyze and to consider to possibly implement as part of the proposed changes. And we did address some of those changes and implemented them. So, one of the changes were adding the non-conforming regulations for existing sites. This change will allow for applicants to amend or modify site plans due to the use of provisions of the zoning regulations in effect at the time the approved application was submitted. Another point was to increase the floor plate size for residential use. Staff has made that amendment to increase it from 10,000 square feet to 12,500 square feet. Staff added provisions for modifications to building length or width, floor plate size, tower step back, tower separation in yards. These modifications will be processed as a site plan Level 3 and are subject to the design criteria that were also added as part of the update. Staff clarified the review process for residential uses. And staff also added food and beverage, retail, and service uses to be allowed as accessory uses to non-residential development. Uh, our intended timeline is to go in front of city commission for December twenty twenty one. And I'm here for any questions. And that's it for my presentation.
Thanks, Carleen. Any questions?
This isn't on this presentation, but after the discussion tonight, is the PRD zone have zero, zero setback?
Which zone?
Side yard. Side yard, the PRD.
Yes, the PRD does have a zero setback side yard.
Okay, well, after the conversation tonight, I wish that was at least five, five feet. Can we make that proposal? Or not?
You can recommend that proposal. That is actually an existing standard that we just left. So, yeah, you can recommend that proposal for us to consider between now and city commission.
Okay, well, I'm going to recommend that, because I think that could probably solve a lot of problems in the future. So, I'm recommending that as a motion to make those, in that zoning area. And I had it tabbed here somewhere, so.
Do you want to wait until we make a final motion?
Oh.
Write them down, I guess.
Yeah, I could do that.
Yeah, you need to, like, Bill couldn't even hear what you said.
I'm sorry, Mary, sorry, it was just pointed out. I'll double, I'm gonna take back. The front and rear are twenty, the sides are zero.
That was, that's what I'm talking about, the side.
Also, you do want the side, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
In what area is this?
This would be the PRD.
And I'm also noticing it's SLA on the chart. The chart's on page sixteen of fifty-five.
Are there any members of the public that want to speak on this that are here? Just out of curiosity? Okay. Sure, you can come up.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. Courtney Crush, Land Use Attorney, and I represent beach property owners and have appeared before you all for projects in our central beach. First of all, we very much appreciate both the board's direction and city staff's time sitting with myself and, in particular, Nectoria Chakas, with Lacharyon Chakas, to address some of the concerns that we had and some of the proposed revisions that are included. With respect to the proposal before the board this evening, we still have some concerns about the floor plates. As I had mentioned in the, in July, I guess it was, right now, there is a distinction between a floor plate appropriate for a hotel and a floor plate appropriate for a residential building. Functionally, I'm not sure whether there's a distinction from a planning standpoint. It's not an office building versus a residential building. These are buildings where people sleep and they usually have glass balconies, glass, you know, floor to ceiling glass on the windows and operate similarly, including having ground level active uses. If, if one also looks at the recently built environment on the beach, as I think Nectoria had pointed out, some of the residential projects that were recently constructed, Adagio, The Four Seasons, The Conrad, have about, floor plates of about seventeen thousand square feet. So, I don't know that there's been a planning direction or thought as to why twelve thousand five hundred would be better at that location. In addition, when you add on the tower step back, and I understand the purpose of stepping back above thirty-five feet, it may be that on some properties, because you've now reduced your floor plate to twelve-five, now you might do a second tower, but given the dimensions of your property, you may not be able to meet that, the requirements to step back from your outer property line, so you may then be only able to build one tower, which could significantly impact property rights. The lack of distinction between, so actually, we would like the board to consider, as I had mentioned last time, perhaps it's appropriate to have a floor plate, whether it's sixteen thousand square feet for hotel and residential. Given what we've seen so far, certainly encouraging taller, you know, excuse me, more slender is worthwhile, but it seems like twelve-five is not what we perhaps have seen recently. Open space is also, has two different sets of requirements for hotel versus residential, because they're calculated a little differently. And if you're mixed use, and so therefore a residential building and have a little bit of commercial on the ground floor, that makes you mixed use, you're held to the higher. I'm not able to tell which, which is greater or less, which would result in more green versus less, but same question is sort of in my mind. Does it make sense to, you know, from the, as you, from the pedestrian level, why would there be a difference between a hotel, walking by a hotel and walking by perhaps a residential building? We very much appreciate staff including modifications. With, we, we know and looking back at some recently built and recently approved projects, it looks like many of the newly constructed buildings would need modifications. Certainly, this board may remember it, heard Oloquino House recently, and Ms. Fertig, we had conversations about the procedural, excuse me, the zoning code path it traveled under. So putting in a modification of building length or width provision, very much appreciated. With respect to the language in the, or the criteria for modifications of building length and width or tower step back, some of them, and Carleen and I had the opportunity to speak, I think there are a couple of them that need to be refined in terms of verbiage, specifically for the modification of building length and width and modification of tower step back, the language is currently read, talks about harmonizing with your abutting property owners. And also, either creating a visual play of light and shadow, or in another case, a standard would be on the step back proving that there isn't a decrease of light and shadow. If, if towers are being constructed, they do shadow things. And I, I think some, some of the priorities as to why a board or staff would want to allow a longer, lower parking podium is that it better meets the goals of the master plan. Significantly may reduce mass, those sorts of standards, and would be happy to work with staff on perhaps refining some of the criteria, even between here and city commission. With respect to the tower step backs specifically, and staff notes it in your draft, a thirty-foot tower step back on some parcels, which staff points out, may not, for small parcels, they may not be able to step back. They may disappear above sixty-five feet. So, the criteria says you should show it's not feasible and demonstrate, again, there's no decrease in light and air. So some of the additional criteria may not be, you may not be able to meet. I can't tell you that by going above sixty-five feet, there's not going to be a shadow. So perhaps it's balanced and, you know, sort of harmony. So we'd very much like to work with staff on that language. Similarly, the modification of floor plate size, as I noted, we've seen buildings that this board has considered recommended for approval, as has the city commission, that exceed the current proposed floor plate size. And right now, as drafted, the, one is allowed to ask for a modification of floor plate size. And one might want to do it if you had a large property. For example, instead of doing two towers, would do one tower, that total floor plate size in the one tower was less than doing two. The board may want to consider it and find it more appropriate and consistent with the plan. Right now, as drafted, I don't think the criteria allows you to ask to exceed. It does say you, if you meet certain criteria, incorporating design, be harmonious with your surround, in with the surrounding context. But then says that the average side of all floor plates above sixty-five feet can't exceed the maximum floor plate size. So while you can undulate your building, it doesn't give you the ability to propose the one tower versus the two if, if the dimensional requirements exceeded it. So I, I think, I think that we very much appreciate staff's consideration of providing these deviations. Would maintain our comments on the effect of the tower floor plate size in conjunction with the tower step back and separation. And would like to continue to work with staff. I, I think we're all on the same, similar, you know, goals in terms of design, but would respectfully ask the board to consider maybe, maybe it's appropriate that we have the hotels, hotel floor plate and that the, we'd be allowed to work with staff to continue to articulate, articulate criteria that don't really set it up almost with variance language, where your, your burden is it's either not feasible or you match your next door neighbor. As, as the board heard on a couple of your applications tonight, the beach similarly in some areas has, you know, very old one and two-story buildings right next to. And I think the beach code is drafted, and I think as the intent of the draft master plan is to create a pedestrian realm. Streetscape makes sure that buildings are respectful, but setting up the requirement to harmonize with your immediate next door neighbor when you're going to be of a different scale is just going to be a different set of criteria than compatibility. Thank you.
Thank you. So, did we make progress? I'm just.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for the wonderful progress.
No, I, I'm just wondering, it sounds like it's still not done. I, I.
I think it's not, but it's getting closer.
I think, I think it is getting closer, my.
Let's close the public here.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Board members.
I think they've made progress, but it still sounds like there's still a little bit of work to do.
That's the way it sounds to me, too.
Impression I get, too.
I'd make a motion that they continue ironing out the handful, you know, it sounds like it's down to floor plates and, and open space. Should be relatively easier to resolve, I would imagine.
They'll continue to hammer out what? Say that again?
Continue to hammer out the, the language or what's needed to, to, to make it more compatible.
And would you add to that, because I'll second it? Would you add to that, that they return to the CBA with this to make sure that it's still acceptable?
Yes.
To them?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm seconding that motion. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, is this being?
I can't hear you, Sherri.
Is this, is this going to another meet, a P and Z meeting? Are you recommending approval to the commission with working out? I just want to clarify what the motion is.
Well, how do we recommend that to the, to the commission if we ourselves haven't heard what the final resolution is? I don't.
No, that's not part of it.
Okay.
No, I think it's gonna, I think Sherri, it's, I think we want it to come back here when some of these details are ironed out.
Okay, so the, the motion is for this to be continued to which meeting?
So Chair, if I could also just, and I apologize for interrupting, but I believe that the speaker tonight actually indicated that she would be willing to work with staff on these items prior to commission. I think what's hard to understand, or I think for, you know, for perhaps everyone to comprehend, is how much effort goes in each and every time we go back and, and sort of work through these items. I think at, at a point, we have to be ready to where staff feels like we've come to a resolution with perhaps some additional minor tweaks, but we added some specific criteria. We worked with Ms. Crush, we worked with Ms. Nectoria Chakas. We made a lot of changes to this ordinance. And I don't want us to dilute it to a point where it no longer represents what we brought in front of you all. And so I think that some of these things that I'm hearing are, you know, things that can be worked out before the commission. But we are also expected to bring it back in front of the commission at some point, where we continue to be asked about, you know, where is this? And how come, how come it's not moving along? So I just wanted to put that on the record and.
It just, I think Ella, the problem is, there's too many little issues that were brought up by Ms. Crush tonight, which gives, you know, the group here a feeling that maybe we're not quite ready.
I mean, I would say bring it back in November, we already tried that. But just see now if, what would be helpful is if we had some of this in writing so that all of us can be reviewing it while you are working on it.
Well, you can bring it back in November and defer the, the tree ordinance unless that has some.
Madam Chair?
Madam.
Well.
Yes.
I've, I've got a question for Ms. Crush.
Yes, sir.
You're, you're more concerned just with inconsistencies. It's not really the heart of.
So.
The rewrite, it's, it's more of just the inconsistencies between mixed-use hotel and straight residential.
Correct.
Those are your main concerns.
Correct, and it may be, if, if I may, I know you've closed public comment. I believe that staff, we have had the discussion and appreciate staff listening to us. I don't believe staff is proposing to change, to, to recommend to you that residential have the same floor plate as hotel. So I don't know that there would be any benefit in time, because staff, I think, would just come back and, and would state why they think it's appropriate. With respect to the modification criteria, I think that's, I think some of the words that are being used just are, are too static and almost create a burden. And I think that word smithing could be done between now and commission. Because I think the intent, so I, I guess what I'm saying is that I think you maybe, if you brought it back, you might have some different language in the criteria. I don't, certainly don't want to speak for Ella and Carleen and her team, but I think they are not going to change the proposal to distinguish between the two. I and Ms. Chakas may not agree with it, but they sat with us and listened to us. Thank you.
It sounds, it sounds to me like, you know, the city's coming as far as they're going to go with respect to these items that they've been discussed. And, you know, I'm not opposed to deferring it if that's what the board so chooses. But I'd, I'd like to understand from those who, who like for it to be deferred, what, with, what exactly they take issue with and, you know, and what the concerns are. Because maybe there's something, you know, that I'm missing with respect to what I, you know, what other board members' concerns are.
We, we have five more minutes, just for the record here. I don't, I, I, I think, Jay, people are concerned with the number of items that Courtney just brought up. However, now that Courtney has spoken, she makes a point that maybe these things could be discussed further prior to city commission, but at least we can move it forward.
But here's the problem, if we want, if we agree, I don't want it to be interpreted that we agree with her changes or that we disagree with her changes, because we're moving forward what's in front of us. That's the problem I have. Now, I, as, as we can tell from tonight, I won't have any problem on voting a certain way if that's the case. But I think that there can't be, we can't leave it open that we totally agreed with her for everything that was on her list. On the other hand, I don't think, you know, I, I would have appreciated just hearing staff say, we don't agree with her on this point because of X, Y, and Z, and it's up to you, planning and zoning board, whether you want to recommend her solution or our solution or something in between. But that conversation has never been had. So now, it's going to the commission.
I can clarify that we did have those conversations with Ms. Crush and Ms. Chakas. There are some things that we are, we kind of came to a compromise with, that being the floor plate going from ten thousand to twelve-five. Ms. Crush would like for it to have no maximum, no, yeah, no maximum floor plate, but the compromise was twelve-five. So that's something that we would still move forward with.
And that's what you, see, that's, I mean, I feel like that's something we need to understand before we vote one way or the other.
But what, what do we want to clear up exactly?
That's what I was asking.
Thank you, Jay.
I recall the original conversations when it was presented before us, and there were a lot of inconsistencies on what was approved out there. And, you know, when it, twelve thousand five hundred was mentioned, I think that was pretty conservative relative to what exists out there now. And that was kind of, you know, the fallback, twelve thousand five hundred, where we ended up. So that was one of the changes that were made with our recommendations.
Yes.
So a lot of the recommendations we made, I think, are in the body of this.
That is.
It's just small items, you know, some of these vague items where we run into, you know, interpreting compatibility, which, you know, we get those all. know, interpreting compatibility, which, you know, we get those all the time, no matter what we write. So I don't think it's going to be perfect. Obviously, we have a code that... We have many cases before us because the code's not perfect, but I think it addresses a lot of what we've got, and I trust the city commission. I mean, those guys are pretty bright up there. They can work through this, and we've already given it a shot. We put our thoughts into this, and I don't see why we can't trust that staff will continue to do a great job and that city commission is going to do the right thing and approve a great amendment.
Okay, why don't we do this? Let's vote on the deferral, and that'll send us in a direction.
Do you want to just vote to extend the meeting because you have two minutes?
No, I want to do it on the deferral first.
Yeah, it's not going to end suddenly.
Okay, so we have a deferral, a motion to defer in a second. Can you call the roll on that?
Mr. Bronco?
Why am I always first?
No.
No? Mr. Cohen? Can't hear you. Say it again, we didn't hear it.
Frozen here.
We hear you, Brad. Now you're muted again.
Brad just woke up.
Now you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I was... The computer froze.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
You want yes or no on the deferral?
No, no with it. I'm sorry, no on the deferral.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
No.
Mr. Rotella?
No.
Mr. Sackman?
No.
Mr. Waymouth?
Yes.
And Chair Scott?
No. Okay, so we need to now make... We need now to extend the meeting.
Yes.
Make a motion to extend the meeting five minutes?
Second.
Discussion on the motion, really? What if we're taking more than five minutes and we're going to do this again? Come on.
I'd like to make a motion that we move this item forward to commission.
We have to extend the...
We first have to extend the meeting.
Do the motion to extend it first because it's 10:15.
Oh, nobody voted to extend the meeting?
No.
I seconded you. And now we have to vote. All in favor, Jackie?
What is this?
This is the squid game. If we don't decide in one minute...
Okay. All in favor of extending the meeting by five minutes, say aye.
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 All oppose? Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to... I'll entertain a motion on this item.
You know, I look through here and I see some of the same questions, and we didn't even get to those tonight. And... But, I mean, we can move it ahead. We're just not moving it ahead with any of the changes that we've discussed, and this is like critically important to the beach. And, you know, the city had, five years ago, recommended directing development away from the barrier island. I don't know. I just feel like we're at the end of a long meeting. Everybody's tired, but we're going to rush this through because that's what's convenient.
Well, I don't want to rush anything through personally, but I'm just... Ms. Crush is here. She still has issues with, you know, what's been proposed, but Ms. Crush, I have the utmost of respect for her, but she obviously represents, you know, interests in the area, and she's telling us herself that, you know, she's up against a wall with the city with respect to the issues that she has. So if we're going to defer it, I'd just like to understand from board members which issues they specifically are concerned with that the city should continue to address.
We're not going to defer.
I am concerned with side yard setbacks and two zones, and I just read through the minutes, and I raised that before, so I don't really... I don't know. I... I don't know that it's just Ms. Crush. Ms. Crush is the only member of the public that stayed around to speak on this.
Jackie, may I speak for a moment?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. What we're doing tonight, if we vote to go to pass it on, isn't we're just passing it on with our recommendations to the city commission who makes a final vote on it? Am I right? Staff?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know why we can't vote on it, raising your concerns, Mary's concerns or anybody else's concerns, but vote on it to pass it on to the city commission, give it to the city commission as is with the concerns that we all have or that Mary has or anyone else has, and let the city commission deal with it. If the city commission is... And I'm concerned with building on the barrier island as well, but we're not the city commission. So we can raise the issues that we have and give our concerns, but we are a recommending body. We're not a body that is the final vote. So that's why I think... That's why I voted not to defer this to another time and just let's move it on. The city's asking where it is. So let's raise our issues and let's move it on to the city and let the city commission deal with the issues that we have raised.
And obviously, that's going to be the will of this group. I mean, I can read that, but I will, again, say, if it wasn't a reason for planning and zoning to review this, then why do you...
That is the reason.
We did.
That is the reason. We're reviewing it. You have your concerns. I would raise your concerns and tell staff to raise those concerns with the city, and I think that's what our job is, is to raise our concerns and let the city vote on it and let the city do the final revision of whatever they want to do. That's who the people voted for, and that's who the people entrusted with making the right decisions. So all we can do is give our recommendations.
Do you want to extend the meeting to 10:30 because it's 10:19? Do you have one minute?
I would make a motion to extend till 10:30, the meeting till 10:30.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, we're not getting it. We're not making a lot of progress here. I don't know if we're going to make the progress you want to make in the next 10 minutes, quite frankly.
No, but...
Because we keep going around the same...
I recommend that the staff work with the stakeholders, you know, between now and when they go to the commission still.
Okay, well, I mean...
If they're...
I kind of agree with what Mary's saying, too. I mean...
Yeah, I do. I do. And I think we should include those concerns and just move it along. I mean, if there are items that we need to make them aware of that weren't addressed to our satisfaction as a board, let's just let commission know.
So why do we really move it on in that situation?
I don't think we can do that in five minutes, but I'm just going to go with what everybody else is doing here because I think we've made two motions to defer and they've gone nowhere, so thank you.
Well, Mary, other than the five foot setback, are there other issues that you want to talk about?
I just listened to some of what Courtney said. I think those are unresolved, and it's not just that they're unresolved, it's that there's no conversation like an upfront, "We're not going to agree with her on that. This is our final decision." I don't... She spoke for three or four minutes and...
But it's part of the record.
And had a whole list of things that were concerns that I feel like we haven't really gotten a response on. But that's fine, let's just go because we're, you know, I mean, it's pointless to do another motion to defer, and so let's just do whatever and all.
Okay. The motion to defer failed, correct? So we're going to move this...
Your motion to defer, correct.
Okay. So does someone want to make a motion, Mary, to pass this along with the items that you want included to be evaluated or reconsidered at the commission level? I don't know how you want to phrase it.
I don't either.
I know.
I don't either. I... That's my problem. I feel like there are several things. I mean, you know I have a concern about the side yard setbacks, and I had the concern when we met before.
Madam Chair?
I...
I think she's wanting to say something. I think she's wanting to say something.
I just wanted to clarify and Ms. Crush also concur that the only thing that we're going to really make changes to between now and commission, if it moves forward, is making the tweaks and modification to the design criteria that was made between now and the July meeting.
Can you articulate what those are because we can't?
It's really word smithing. The main problem is talking about how they can address light and air and how they can address being harmonized with an adjacent property. So we will most likely work with them to say, making sure they're compatible with the neighborhood as a whole and not just being adjacent or harmonizing with the property right next door.
Do you concur with that? Do you feel that you can get this accomplished? We go to December, commission? Do you think that this can be ironed out? I mean, what's our safety net that if you guys can't iron this out, that it just doesn't go in some other form?
So we don't have to go to commission in December. That is my timeline, but if it takes another month to work it out with Ms. Crush, then we'll do that.
But what if we can't work it out?
Then we still have to move forward with city commission and tell them why we don't agree or agree with the comments either made from the board as well as the members of the community.
And what about... Not to get back to this, but what about the side yard setbacks?
That could be a representation from...
Is that anything anybody's looking at? Because, you know, the two issues that I hear you all talking about are the same two issues that have dominated this evening, neighborhood compatibility and setbacks. And they have, you know, we just keep going round and round, and then someone says, "Well, we made that decision. I guess we didn't make a bad decision, but we have to stick with what we made." But you know what? We don't have to make a bad decision in the first place.
Well, we're not saying that. We're... We could recommend that they change the setbacks to the commission. Anything that we say anyways is a recommendation to the commission. So we just want to know what are all those things so we can recommend them.
I think some things...
Because even Courtney is saying that, you know, it doesn't make sense to delay it any longer. There's nobody here that's asking for us to make this, you know, go on longer.
Courtney, are side setbacks a concern for you?
Chair, if I may, Assistant City Attorney DeWayne Spence speaking. So let me just kind of reset the function of the board here. It is functioning as a local planning agency to review the recommended text change. What happened at the last time that it was here at the meeting, members of the public, the legal community raised some concerns. It was sent back with those concerns. Staff took a look at those concerns, drafted a new document, revised the old document, and brought it back to this board. Your recommendation on the item before you is captured in the minutes, and as Member Cohen has stated, would move forward with the amendment proposed by staff. I would agree with Member Sackman. If you don't think that the recommendations that you've put forward in the last meeting were addressed, that you articulate and direct staff precisely as to what needs to be addressed because we believe that is what we worked on and brought back to you this time around. I think clearer direction, if you're not comfortable with moving it forward with the minutes of this meeting, would be appropriate at this time.
So?
You have four minutes. Do you want to extend?
No. Oh, did I say that out loud?
No, for the love of God.
Mr. Furtig?
So if I understand what Assistant City Attorney said, that we could point to the minutes to define what our issues are, right?
There you go.
And ask that they're worked out. So we would, in essence, be moving this along and noting via the minutes, the issues that are still important to this board and that need to be resolved, or at least issues that we would raise that we would want the city commission to resolve.
That's correct, but it would either be a motion to recommend approval or a motion to recommend denial. One of those motions, along with citing to the minutes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Don't look at me. You want to take a stab at it?
I'll move to approve.
I'll take a shot at a motion.
What happens if we voted down?
Goes to the commission as a recommendation.
Excuse me?
It goes to the commission as a recommendation either way. So vote up or down.
Okay.
Either way, it goes to the commission.
And they'll be taking a look at your minutes for guidance.
Make a recommendation to approve with the caveat that staff revisit the original record, the minutes of the original meeting, when we made the recommendations for the changes, and that items such as the setback are addressed, and any other items that we asked be addressed are addressed in the final draft.
Can you make that the minutes of the July meeting and the minutes of tonight?
Speak in the microphone, please.
The meetings of the July meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, and the minutes of tonight's meeting. Be included.
Is there a second to that motion?
Don't look at me.
Second.
Jay Sackman seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Jamie, call the roll, please.
I... Oh, yeah. I just would add, John, I would just add the residential versus... I know you said all the points, but I think one of the two biggest were the step backs and then the hotel versus residential treatment. So maybe just to also specifically point out the hotel versus residential treatment.
So would Ms. Crush's comments be considered part of the record, of course, right? That that would be pointing to?
Yeah, I wouldn't accept that amendment. I'm just discussing what we brought up as a board. I'm not going to include Ms. Crush's items as part of the record. It's more of what the board discussed and brought forward to staff as recommendations to commission.
You have one minute. Do you want to extend?
I'll still second that, John.
Okay, does the board want to extend five more minutes? 10 more minutes?
Let's just vote.
Pardon me? Mary just said we have to extend. Okay.
I don't think you can do everything in a minute, so I would just extend, yeah.
You haven't seen us at our best.
Let's... What'd you say?
She hasn't seen us at our best.
Yeah. Can someone make a motion to extend for 15 minutes? We can still close before that, but I want to stop this craziness.
Motion to extend 15 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes.
Oh. Rob's rule of order is out the window. We had a motion. We had a motion, we had a second, and then we had another motion, a second. So we got an extension.
Sorry.
So back to the original motion and the second.
Correct. And then Jay... Did Jay add...
Jay was the second.
I tried adding something. It was rejected, and that's okay. I'm still here. I'm up for the second.
Okay. So let's vote on the original motion, please.
Ready?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
What?
Can we repeat that motion?
No.
Can you repeat that motion, John? Can someone repeat that?
Yeah, I'll try to repeat it.
Okay.
So the motion was that we recommend, or we approve and recommend to city commission to accept the draft that's being presented to them and can also consider the minutes from the July meeting as well as the minutes from tonight's meeting to be sure that all of the board's recommendations were included.
But not to include Mrs. Crush's...
Yeah, yeah, we're not doing that. Okay, there's the motion. Please call the roll.
Ms. Furtig?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
No.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Sackman?
Yes.
Mr. Waymouth?
No.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
And Chair Scott?
No.
Passed five to four.